Yes, we are now ready to go.
Okay, thank you. I want to welcome you all to the September 13th meeting of the City Planning Commission. My name is Jeff Carson. I'll be serving as your chair this evening. Want to make a couple of quick introductions before we get started. Also, serving tonight as vice chair to the Planning and Zoning Commission will be Commissioner Karen Jones. We also have Gunner Hand, who is the Director of Land Use and Urban Planning. Janet Parker, who you'll be hearing a lot from this evening. She's the Executive Assistant to the Department of Land Use and Urban Planning. And we also have Kim Portillo, who is part of the Department of Land Use and Urban Planning Staff. We also have Patrick Waters, who is our Unified Government Legal Counsel with us tonight. And the following Planning and Zoning Commissioners are present. Commissioner James Ernst, Commissioner Susanna Polly, Commissioner Joanne Huey, Commissioner Mark Muller, Commissioner Brandy Armstrong, Commissioner Jake Miller, and Commissioner Evelyn Hill. And with that, I will turn the meeting over to Secretary Parker, who will read the opening statement.
We would like to welcome those participating to the meeting of the City Planning Commission. Due to COVID-19, the members are participating remotely by Zoom webinar. Mr. Jeff Carson is serving as chairman this evening. Please note the following instructions for the meeting. If you are joining by Zoom video, please make sure you have an appropriate background and plan to stay visible during the meeting. Planning Commission members use the raise your hand feature to speak. After Chairman Carson recognizes you, unmute your microphone and please state your name when you begin to speak. If you need to recuse yourself, use the raise your hand feature. For those in attendance, use the raise your hand feature when you want to speak on an issue. The chairman will recognize you when it is your time to speak. Unmute your microphone and state your name and address before giving your comments. If you have called in by telephone to Zoom meeting, please email YCO KCK dot email. Proper meeting decorum is expected of all participating in the meeting. And anyone who fails to act properly may be removed from the meeting. The city reserves the right to discontinue a meeting if any improper behavior occurs, which prevents the uninterrupted conduct of business. The Planning Commission is a voluntary body of citizens, which will review each zoning proposal for all change of zones, special use permits, vacations, and preliminary plan reviews on tonight's agenda. The Planning Commission makes recommendations to the Unified Government Board of Commissioners, who will then make the final decisions on Thursday, September 30th, 2021. For final plaits and final plan reviews heard tonight, the Planning Commission's decision is final, and there will not be another hearing. The format for this evening's meeting is as follows. The applicant will make the opening statement explaining the proposal. Please note that the applicant will be given 15 minutes to present their case. The 15 minutes includes the applicant, consultants, and other members of the applicant's team. Members of the Planning Commission will then address any questions they may have to the applicant. Any persons wishing to speak in favor will be called upon and allowed to do so at that time. Then those persons in opposition will be called upon and allowed to make their statements and ask questions. Please note that each member of the public who wishes to speak will be given five minutes to express their opinions. Time may not be shared between speakers. A speaker may request to extend their time, and the Planning Commission may, by two-thirds majority vote, extend any speaker's time in five-minute increments. The applicant will then answer questions and make a closing statement. The public hearing portion of the meeting will be closed, and the public will only be allowed to address the commission if a question is directed to them by the chairman. The Planning Commission will discuss the application and make their recommendation. If persons in opposition want to formally protest a change of zone or special use permit, a means is available by a legal protest petition, which can be obtained along with the necessary instructions by emailing the Urban Planning and Land Use Department at planninginfo@YCOKCK.org tomorrow morning. Any application receiving a unanimous vote of recommendation by the Planning Commission will appear on the consent agenda of the Unified Government Board of Commissioners. Unless there is a request to remove an item from the consent agenda by the applicant, a member of the Unified Government Commission, or other interested parties, the Planning Commission's recommendation will be adopted. The consent agenda is heard at the beginning of the meeting at 7:00 PM. The Planning Commission will also have a consent agenda as part of their meeting this evening. The consent agenda is the first part of the agenda, and items on the consent agenda are final plaits, final plans, or special use permit renewals that have received a staff recommendation to approve. Unless there is a request to remove an item from the consent agenda by the applicant, a member of the staff, a member of the Planning Commission, or other interested parties, the staff recommendation on all of the items on the consent agenda will be adopted by the Planning Commission at one time. I will read a list of agenda items on the consent agenda, and when I have completed the list, the chairman will ask if there are any requests to remove items. This is your time to use the raise your hand feature, be recognized, and request an item be removed from the consent agenda if you do not agree with the staff recommendation. The Planning Commission has required to disclose contacts about any item on the Planning Commission agenda. Before each item, I will ask if any contacts have been made, and members of the commission will be asked to disclose those contacts at that time. Please note that your opinions will be forwarded to the governing body for their consideration in making a final decision. In addition, those who receive notices for this hearing will again receive them for the hearing on Thursday, September 30th, 2021. I will now read the items on the consent agenda. Consideration of the August 9, 2021, City Planning Commission Minutes. Plaid 2021-011 Andrea Wisshoff with Atlas Surveyor. Final plaid for two lots at 9535 State Avenue. Plaid 2021-015 Ian Arnold. Final plaid for four lots at 4227 Mission Road, 3014, 3004, and 3002 West 43rd Avenue. Plan Review Application PR 2021-026 John M. White. Final Plan Review for a Neighborhood Pool with Pool House, Restroom, and Storage at 12334 Parkview Avenue. Plan Review Application PR 2021-027 Jeff Yards. Final Plan Review for an Industrial Building with Associated Drives and Parking at 2820 Row Lane A. Plan Review Application PR 2021-028 David Lots with Continental Consulting. Final Plan Review for Walcon Wastewater Treatment Plant Pump Station Number 50 Excess Flow Holding Tank at 10525 Donahue Road. And Plan Review Application PR 2021-029 Gerald Minifee with Can Design Group LLC. Final Plan Review for Fuel Pumps at 5940 Leavenworth Road. The items I have just read are on the consent agenda. At this time, does any member of the commission wish to disclose any contact on any of these items? Thank you. Please include the following items as part of the record for all of the items on the consent agenda. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations. The official zoning map for the area in question. The city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question. The staff report and attachments dated September 13, 2021. The application and other documents, plans, pictures, and maps submitted by the applicant in furtherance of the case and contained in the official file. The publications in the, I'm sorry, excuse me, and the notices to property owners. The commission will vote to approve in one vote these items unless someone requests that an item be removed from the consent agenda.
Thank you. Is there anyone in, on the commission that would like to have an item pulled from the consent agenda for special consideration? Please raise your hand. Okay, I'm not seeing anyone. I'm going to go to the audience. Anyone in the audience wants something pulled from the consent agenda for special consideration? Please raise your hand. I'm going to go to Dwayne first. Please give me your name, and then tell me what item that you would like to have pulled from the consent agenda. Go ahead and unmute yourself, Dwayne. Dwayne, unmute yourself, please, and then I'm going to go on to J.C. Gardner. Go ahead and unmute yourself, please, and tell me which item you'd like to have removed.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, it's kind of hard to find the unmute button just for your information when we're in this mode. I apologize for that. PR 2021-026 for the swimming pool. I have some questions about that.
Chairman, I need your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, ma'am. Please give us your name and address.
My name is Jackie Gardner. That's okay. 12412 Parkview Avenue, KCK 66109.
Thank you. Okay, we'll get to that one in just a moment. I'm going to go back to Dwayne. You can please unmute yourself. Dwayne. Okay, it looks like you're unmuted, sir. Go ahead and give us your name and address, please, and tell us what item you'd like to have removed from the consent agenda. Sir. Hey, I'm going to go on down to Oscar. Oscar, please give us your, unmute yourself. Give us your name and address.
I'm at 4001 North 74th Street.
Okay, also need your name.
Oscar Flores.
Okay, and is there an item you want to remove from the consent agenda?
I'm sorry, I just had a question. Is this, I don't think I heard my permit for a doggy daycare being mentioned, or did I just miss it?
You're not on the consent agenda, sir.
All right.
Your case is later on in the evening.
Okay, is that another time?
No, it's at the same time. It's just later in the evening.
Okay, I got it. I'll just pay attention. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, kind of try one more time for Dwayne. Okay, we'll go to Laura Bashes. Laura?
Can you hear me?
Yes, name and address, please.
Laura Bashes, 1740 South 86th Street.
And you want removed?
Well, I want to make sure this is the right one. It's permit Z0Z 2021 018. It's the asphalt plant.
That is on the non-consent agenda, so that will be heard in a little bit. These are only, the only items that we're discussing right now, folks, are on the consent agenda. If you want any items pulled off the consent agenda for special consideration. Only the items on the consent agenda. Okay, Dwayne, last call. If you can unmute yourself, which it looks like you are unmuted, just give me your name and address, please. Okay, we're going to go ahead and move on. Janet, if you could, please remove PR 2021-026.
Hey, I've got it.
Okay. And now I will entertain a motion from the commission to approve the remaining items on the consent agenda.
Motion to approve remaining items on the consent agenda as noted.
Thank you. Motion to approve by Commissioner Jones, seconded by Commissioner Armstrong, I believe.
Huey.
I'm sorry, Huey. Sorry, I can't see you all. Motion to approve and a second, any discussion on approval of the remaining items on the consent agenda? Seeing none, all is in favor. I'm sorry, Janet, roll call.
Ernst.
Hi.
Hill.
Hi.
Huey.
Hi.
Jones.
Hi.
Miller.
Hi.
Muller.
Hi.
Polly.
Hi.
Armstrong.
Hi.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to approve the remaining items on the consent agenda subject to the conditions and comments in the staff report passes eight in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. For those of you in attendance tonight that were looking for items on the consent agenda, those items, with the exception of the one that was pulled, have all passed, so unless you need to stay on the call for any other reason, you're welcome to go ahead and leave. But you're welcome to stay if you like, but all the items on the consent agenda, with the exception of the one that was pulled off, have passed. Okay, Janet, you want to go ahead and call that case then, please?
Mr. Chairman, can I just do a point of order?
Yes.
Before we move on, when we get ready to make a motion, what Planning Commission needs to do is use the raise your hand feature, and then the chairman will call on you, and then I need you to state your name, and then make your motion, and then the same way with the second. That way, that makes it a little bit clearer for the chairman and I.
And it will also make it clear for the record, so thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right.
The application that was removed from the consent agenda is Plan Review Application PR 2021-026 John M. White with Heartland Ventures. Final Plan Review for a Neighborhood Pool with Pool House, Restrooms, and Storage at 12334 Parkview Avenue.
Hey, is there someone here representing the developer this evening? I see Reed with their hand up is, are you here to represent the developer tonight, Reed?
Hello?
Yes. Yes, are you here to represent the developer?
No, 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 sir. I'm just trying to unmute, unmute. This is so hard to unmute.
Okay, well, I'm not, I can't, I have to mute you back until we're ready, unless you have something that you want to say.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. White is on, I see him right here.
Okay, I see Mr. White and I see Sue Inbrotten. I believe they're both with the development company, so I'm going to unmute you both to speak. Mr. White and Ms. Inbrotten, so go ahead, please. Whoever's going to speak on behalf of the developer, give us your name and address, please, and tell us about this project.
Hi, Jeff, can you hear me? This is Sue.
Yes, go ahead, Sue, please. Give us your name and address, please.
My name is Sue Inbrotten, spelled E-N-G-B-R-O-T-E-N. My address is 11205 Cedar Street, Leewood, Kansas.
And go ahead and tell us about this project.
This is the neighborhood community pool with a clubhouse with men's and women's restrooms, pool equipment area, and some storage. As I think most of you are probably aware, in the original development agreement, there is a place for a neighborhood pool, and we are just trying to get the application approved so that we can start the pool. We're under contract to begin the pool here in the next 45 days or so. It's a pretty standard neighborhood pool, so if there's specific questions, we can answer them, but I don't, I don't know what they are.
Okay, thank you very much. And I'm sorry, did you give us the name of the development?
Oh, it's Genesis at Piper, but we call it Newbury at Piper.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. White, did you have anything that you wanted to add?
No, I was just checking in to make sure it was here.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, any questions from the commission members to the applicant? Okay, seeing none, we'll go to the audience members. Anyone in the audience that wants to speak in favor of or in opposition to this request, please raise your hand. And the first person I've shown is Reed. Are you wanting to speak to this case?
I apologize. No, I am not part of this. I should be in a non-consent, and I truly apologize. Should I just stay muted?
I'm going to keep you muted, muted, and then I'm going to lower your hand, and if you want to speak, raise your hand. Otherwise, you're muted in the audience, okay?
I am so sorry. I'm just learning this.
That's okay. No, no problem at all. Okay, I'm going to call on Jackie Gardner.
Hello.
Hello. Go ahead, please. I'm going to need, I'm going to need your name and address again, please, for the record.
Perfect. Jackie Gardner, 12412 Parkview Avenue, KCK 66109.
Okay.
I have a quick question first. If I have questions about the plan, the details of the plan, I don't think that's appropriate for this meeting. Who would I direct that to?
Well, that's what we're discussing tonight on the plan. It's the plan review application.
That's what I thought. I don't have a lot of details about the design, but Commissioner Kane did send to us, some of us, the original plan that was submitted in July, and I do have one question about the plan, about the engineering of it. I didn't, and this is kind of anal, I realize, I don't see a hose bib anywhere. I saw an electrical outlet on the outside of the building, but I didn't see a hose bib, so I don't know how we would fill the pool, water the landscaping, fill a bucket to mop the floors, anything like that. That's just a small detail. It's probably in there, but since I couldn't find it, I want to mention it before we go forward.
Okay, we can certainly get you an answer to that. Is there anything else that you wanted to have answered? Once I close the public portion of the meeting, I can't come back to you, so is this the only question that you have?
No, it's not.
Okay.
Question number, number two. Given that the developer's going to be working on building the amenities, there are some areas of our neighborhood, some of the lots, that get overrun with rainstorm water, and we're hoping that they can design berms or whatever, at least I'm hoping, and some other people have told me the same, when they put in the landscaping to help divert that water. Some of them are these lots, 48, 49, 50, and 51, that are on the south side of the pool. But there are also lots on the other side where tract A is, where they're building the walking trail right now. And just this summer, they had to do a lot of repair work on our streets because of deterioration of the streets themselves. Right there at the intersection of 124, yes, that one floods those houses to the northwest, right there on the corner. And that intersection at 124th and Parkview, they had to come in and repair a lot of street damage because of deterioration, because those two lots both flood into that, not flood, sorry, run into that area. So there's a lot of deterioration there. We're hoping the landscaping and the installation of the amenities can resolve that. And then item number three for this conversation is, I know there's been a lot of talk about the developer having to build the pool between the 100th house and the 120th house, but my reading of the November 2013 staff report down on page five in the staff conclusion and actually says the pool was supposed to have been built when Phase Two started. And the quote for that is literally, "The applicant will need to build the pool on track C at the beginning of the second phase." The first, what do you call it, hang on, permit for Phase Two was pulled in December of 2016. So I know we can't go backwards, but I think if I'm reading it right, we need to ensure that this is going to get done as quickly as possible as opposed to waiting for the 120th, because we don't have a crystal ball to know that that's ever going to happen, but the pool is now required and is no longer an option at the 120th house. I mean, it's already delinquent. So those are the three items I'd like to address.
Okay, thank you. We'll see if we can get you some answers.
Thank you.
Anyone else want to speak in favor of or in opposition to this request? Please raise your hand. Seeing no one else, I'm going to go ahead and go back to the applicants for some clarification of a couple of issues. Ms. Inbrotten or Mr. White, if you could just let us know, one, is there a hose bib somewhere around the pool house? To ensure that there's a water source, I guess.
Yes, there is a hose bib that's going to be, there's going to be a one inside of the area where the pool equipment's going to be. This is for washout and that type, that type of stuff. Plus, there's going to be one on the outside, on the southern, you know, section, they're kind of facing the parking lot a little bit.
Okay, and then secondly, can you speak to any of the discussion with regard to whether the amenity will have a positive or negative impact on flooding or drainage issues on the intersection that at or around, at or near the pool location?
Everything that we're breaking ground on, on the picture I'm looking at right now, that the site right there, it shows the drainage and where it all belongs. There is a, an inlet already there, but since it's just grass, it's not directed towards it. I think by putting the hard surfaces in there, the water runoff will be directed much faster, getting into the actual storm drains from, from the pool down the parking lot, you kind of see it there on the, on the, on the left hand, by, beside Lot 48.
Okay, yes, all right, thank you. And then finally, can you speak to the construction of the pool with regard to the development agreement? There seems to be some discussion whether or not that was supposed to be installed on the start of Phase Two or between the 100 and 120th lot.
Sue, I'm going to have you take care of that.
I'm going, yeah, I'm going to go ahead and give her permission. I believe you've got permission to go ahead and unmute Ms. Inbrotten.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, Jeff, I don't have that information in front of me that Ms. Gardner referred to. I think all along through this entire development, not only have we been operating under this 100th to 120th permit, but, but I think the Unified Government has also been operating under that. I mean, as, as she stated, we can't really go backward. I mean, we are where we are. I don't, I don't know what we can do. I don't know what we can do now.
But as far as the construction timetable for the pool now, can you go ahead and repeat? I think you mentioned in your opening comments when that pool is scheduled to begin, and do you have an estimated completion time?
I, I can tell you that we are, at the last time we checked with Swim Things, the contractor, we are slated for construction to begin in October. I don't, I don't know when they'll be completed. I don't know what we'll run up against with weather, with labor issues, with material issues. There are many, many problems in new construction, but I, I, we are anxious to get started.
Thank you. Okay, any question, any remaining questions for the commission members of the applicant before we go to Director Ham for his comment on this case? Seeing none, we will now go to Director Ham and get his comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is Gunner Hand, Director of Planning and Urban Design. Again, this is the site plan for the pool in the common tract for Genesis or Newbury at Piper subdivision. This is in the Perry, Delaware, Piper Master Plan area. Staff had several conditions of approval related to this project after, after our review thereof. We asked them for some additional landscaping around the pool, which you can see in the site plan. We asked that a sidewalk, excuse me, a crosswalk be installed across Parkview Avenue, I believe it is, as the sidewalk is on the south side of Parkview, and this is, this development is on the north side of Parkview without a sidewalk. So make that sidewalk connection in particular. We had a couple of design issues related to the bathroom building and storage building itself, specifically the siding to match the other homes in the adjacent area. We didn't see any lighting in the proposal, so we're not 100% sure if that is going to be impacted. But if it is, there's a condition in here to make sure that it doesn't glare any of the adjacent neighbors. As you can see from here, it's sort of in the backyard of a lot of these adjacent parcels in particular. Excuse me. I think as it relates to some of the questions that were asked, a lot of these details will be picked up in, at the Development Review Committee when building permits are pulled. These are not building permits. This is the entitlement for the project. Specifically, and I would also note that the original underlying approval for the subdivision itself was a change of zone and a preliminary development plan. The condition of that approval was that the pool had to be built before the 100, by the 120th permit being pulled. So the range gave them the max at 120, so the 121st building permit cannot be pulled or issued until this pool is constructed, built, and in operation. And I believe that is what we're working towards with this plan review. There are, we've thus far received no letters of support, opposition. There are no notices of violation on this property. Staff recommends approval.
Thank you. I just have one question. Do you know where we're at on the number of permits? What, what number of lots or number of houses constructed so far where we're at?
I'd have to double check my emails. I believe Ms. Inbrotten knows. I think they're right at like 119.
Okay, all right, so we're close to that number. Okay. Let's see here. Okay, any questions for the director? Okay, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion. Commissioner Jones.
Motion to approve case number PR 2021-026.
Motion to approve case number PR two oh two one dash zero two six with the staff stipulations and comments.
Okay, uh, motion made by Commissioner Jones, Commissioner Hill. Go ahead and unmute yourself, Commissioner Hill.
Uh, I second, thank you.
Okay, the second goes to Commissioner Hill. Any discussion? Okay, roll call please, Janet.
Ernst.
Hi.
Hill.
Hi.
Ewing.
Hi.
Jones.
Hi.
Miller.
Hi.
Moller.
Hi.
Paulie.
Hi.
Armstrong.
Hi.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to approve this plan review, subject to the conditions in the staff report, passes eight in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. This will be heard once again. No, it will not. Sorry.
We're sorry, um. Mr. Chairman, that completes the consent agenda and we will move on to the non-consent agenda. None of the items on the consent agenda will move forward.
Correct, I understand. I'm sorry.
Okay, we have two items. We're going to hear it together. Master plan amendment, MPL twenty twenty one dash zero one three. Joe McLaughlin with BHC Roads, master plan amendment from low density residential to public semi-public and citywide master plan at eighty seven forty one Parallel Parkway. And the corresponding change of zone application, COZ twenty twenty one dash zero zero five. Change of zone from R one single family district to CPO planned, non-retail business district for additional parking and buildings for Providence Medical Center at eighty seven forty one Parallel Parkway. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations, the official zoning map for the area in question. The city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question. The staff report and attachments dated September thirteen, twenty twenty one. The application and other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant. In furtherance of the case, it contained in the official file the notice in the wine dot echo for the for both applications and the notices to property owners. Does any member of the commission have any contact disclosed with regard to this case?
No.
Hey, Mr. McLaughlin, I've got you queued up to speak. If you'd go ahead and start off with your name and address, please.
Yes, uh, my name is Joe McLaughlin. I'm with BHC. Uh, address seven twelve State Avenue, Kansas City, Kansas. Six six one, I'm I'm sorry, six six one oh.
Okay, go ahead and tell us about your project.
Okay, uh, as Janet said, we're looking to change uh the zoning for a parcel of property near Providence Medical Center. Um, it's currently zoned R one single family district. We'd like to uh, change that to CP dash O and non-retail business district to allow some additional parking and buildings. Uh, like I said, over Providence Medical Center, eighty seven forty one Parallel Parkway. There's also a couple of members of my team who should be uh, here as well. I got Austin Lage. He's the civil engineer who's been handling the plans. And uh, Sean Asmus, he's the petitioner.
Okay, I've got Austin keyed up to speak. If you'd like to, please to just give us your name and address and jump right in.
Uh, Austin Lage, L A G E and uh, seventy one oh one College Boulevard, Suite four hundred. Overland Park, Kansas, six six two one zero. Uh, along with the rezoning, we are going to subdivide roughly four point seven acres um, along the south side of this new uh, of the rezoning and construct a two-story building of approximately thirty two thousand square feet total uh, with parking and drives along with uh, water quality and water quantity uh, facilities. Later, there is going to be an addition of a ten thousand five hundred square foot, single story building, but that is a future expansion. Uh, and that will come with future parking as well.
Hey, thank you. Anything else?
Uh, I think the only thing I just wanted to queue up is on the conditions, and I know we'll get to that. We just wanted to go over one condition with staff.
Okay, which one is that that you?
Uh, future development must connect to Parallel Parkway and all existing campus transportation nodes and provide pedestrian access. I just want to make sure that if we put another building, say, just north of this one, so we and it's not close to Parallel Parkway, do we have to connect a road to Parallel Parkway? Or can we still just go off of the main entrance uh, into the overall facility?
Janet, do you want to take that quick question or clarification?
Our hand, Director Plan and Urban Design, if you recall, um, commissioners about six months, two year ago, a plat came in for this. Um, and had been approved in anticipation for this master plan amendment and change of zone. At that time, one of the conditions of approval was to create pedestrian access to Parallel Parkway. There are currently no uh, sidewalk along that access drive from Parallel Parkway, and we wanted to make sure that pedestrian access uh, in accordance with commercial design guidelines um, is met. Um, so no, I don't think we're necessarily asking for another driveway. We're asking that this building be connected that um primarily or predominantly perhaps specifically for pedestrians um, both within the current campus as well as to Parallel Parkway.
And that's related. Does that clarify?
Yes, it does.
All right, great. Thank you. Anything else you want to add before we go to the public comment?
No.
All right, thank you. So I'm going to go to, I'm sorry, is Mr. Osmus with you also? Is there anyone else with your group that needed to speak? Mr. Lage or Mr. McLaughlin?
I don't believe so. I know Sean's here, but I don't think he needs to speak.
Okay, all right. Anyone in the audience want to speak in favor of or in opposition to this request? Please raise your hand at this time. I'm not seeing anyone. Uh, we'll go ahead and close the public portion of the meeting. We'll go to Director Hand for his comment.
Hey, Mr. Chair, this is going to hand her to a planer and design. Um, building off my previous comments, um when this project does come in um, or when they further finalize the details of this specific project, it will require a final development plan. Um, which is a, it's not really a condition of approval, although it is in there. It's technically just the process. We wanted to make it clear um, that an FDP would have to come in, at which time we'd get more um, specific about the commercial design guidelines. Excuse me, as well as um, some of the pedestrian circulation that was mentioned a little earlier. Um, there are, to date, no letters of support nor opposition um, for this case. There's no notices of violation on the property. Staff recommends approval.
Any questions for staff? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, this will be for the master plan amendment?
Yes, I'm sorry. I'll need two motions. The first one will be for the master plan. Commissioner Miller.
Move to approve the master plan amendment.
Motion made to approve by Commissioner Miller. Second, is that going to Commissioner Armstrong? Commissioner Armstrong.
I second.
Thank you. Motion to approve made by Commissioner Miller, seconded by Commissioner Armstrong. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call please.
Ernst.
Hi.
Hill.
Hi.
Ewing.
Hi.
Jones.
Hi.
Miller.
Hi.
Moller.
Hi.
Paulie.
Hi.
Armstrong.
Hi.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of the master plan amendment passes eight in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. Now entertain a motion on the change of zone. Commissioner Miller.
Move to approve change of zone application twenty twenty one zero zero five.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Miller. Is there a second? Commissioner Armstrong?
I second.
Motion approved by Commissioner Miller, seconded by Commissioner Armstrong. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Ernst.
Hi.
Hill.
Hi.
Ewing.
Hi.
Jones.
Hi.
Miller.
Hi.
Moller.
Hi.
Paulie.
Hi.
Armstrong.
Hi.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of the change of zone application, subject to the conditions in the staff report, passes eight in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. These two cases will be heard once again on September thirtieth at seven PM before the Board of County Commissioners.
Mr. Chairman, my next application is change of zone application, COZ twenty twenty one dash zero one two Ray L. Sawyer. Change of zone from R one single family district to AG agriculture district for horses at thirty seven twenty six North Forty Seventh Terrace. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations, the official zoning map for the area in question. The city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question. The staff report and attachments dated September thirteen, twenty twenty one. The application and other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant. In furtherance of the case, it contained in the official file, the notice in the wine dot echo and the notices to property owners. Does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose with regard to this case?
No.
No.
Okay, Mr. Sawyer, oh, go ahead.
Just as a reminder, um, this case has been heard several times and held over for the conservation district plan and uh, Mr. Sawyer and the conservation district did get together this last month to get that plan done.
All right, thank you. Mr. Sawyer, are you in the audience? Are you by chance LG Stylo five? I need LG Stylo five to unmute themselves.
Yeah, yes, that is me.
That's Mr. Sawyer?
Yes.
Okay, first of all, I just need you to give me your name and address, please, for the record. It sounds like we made some progress since we last spoke.
Right, my name is Ray Sawyer, thirty seven twenty six North Forty Seventh Terrace.
Okay, go ahead and tell us what we've got done here.
Uh, what we got done, we we were able to get in touch with the uh, Conservation Office. They came out. Did an assessment. We had a uh, we had a good meeting out there. Um, I showed them what I was trying to do. Um, the uh, young lady, uh, Sherry Mitchell, I believe her name was, and I can't recall the gentleman's name. Uh, they came out, I showed them what I was trying to do, they was on board with it. And um, you know, they they said was gonna, they was gonna write up a plan. I told them that I had uh, some soil coming in, which I've already got that in. Um, and um, that's that's basically it.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Sawyer? Seeing none, we'll go to the public. Anyone in the audience want to speak in favor of or in opposition to this request tonight? Please raise your hand. Seeing none, we'll go to Director Hand and get his comments on this case.
Hey, Mr. Chair, this is going to hand her to a planner of design. As Ms. Parker had mentioned earlier, this is a carryover from a couple of times uh, in the past few months. Uh, Mr. Sawyer was able to reach out and connect with the conservation district. There is a conservation plan included in the conditions of uh, and those conditions are included in the staff's conditions of approval. Namely, Mr. Sawyer has um, six horses on his property. He's allowed to keep those six horses until he sells two of them. And in the future, only four horses will be allowed on the property. There's a couple of other things in relation to ground cover. You can even see it a little bit on this aerial uh, map. Part of his um training area goes over his property line. The conservation district noted that and asked him to scooch it over a little bit. It's very common in the sort of drive area uh, neighborhood. Um, um, sort of those types of uh, slight encroachments, just because probably didn't know where the property line was. Um, one of the conditions of approval also matched uh, or from the conservation plan also matched one of our conditions of approvals, which is to um, rectify an existing uh, notice of violation on the property. Uh, this is the one related to some of the construction debris that we saw um, for the grading Mr. Sawyer did in and around his pond. There was some additional grading again that Mr. Sawyer had just mentioned. Uh, he brought in some topsoil to address that accordingly. Mr. Sawyer does have a letter from one of his neighbors in support of the project. We've received no letters in opposition. Again, there is that one outstanding NOV that through the both conservation plan and our conditions of approval, we will continue to monitor and make sure that that gets all cleaned up. And with that, staff recommends approval.
Thank you. Any questions for Director Hand? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion. Commissioner Ernst.
I think it's time we stop horsing around, so. We can city, Kansas City Planning Commission recommend approval of petition COZ two oh two one dash oh one two. And I'd like to thank the gentleman for working with us.
Thank you very much, and thank you for that wonderful motion. Is there a second, Commissioner Jones?
I concur with Commissioner Ernst and would like a second.
Thank you. Motion made for approval by Commissioner Ernst, the seconded by Commissioner Jones. Any discussion on that motion for approval? Seeing none, roll call.
Ernst.
Hi.
Hill.
Hi.
Ewing.
Hi.
Jones.
Hi.
Miller.
Hi.
Moller.
Hi.
Paulie.
Hi.
Armstrong.
Hi.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of this change of zone application, subject to the conditions in the staff report, passes eight in favor and none opposed.
Thank you, Mr. Sawyer. This will be heard once again on September thirtieth before the Board of County Commissioners at seven PM. I'm sure that meeting will be via Zoom. So thank you for your work on this, and uh, we look forward to getting you approved.
Mr. Chairman, we have two items that we're going to hear together. Master plan amendment, MPL twenty twenty one dash zero zero six Cole Anderson. Master plan amendment from Business Park to Industrial at sixteen twenty five South Eighty Sixth Street. And change of zone application, COZ twenty twenty one dash zero one eight. Change of zone from MP three planned heavy industrial and AG agriculture districts to MP three planned heavy industrial district for a permanent asphalt plant at sixteen twenty five South Eighty Sixth Street. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations, the official zoning map for the area in question. The city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question. The staff report and attachments dated September thirteen, twenty twenty one. The application and other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant. In furtherance of the case, it contained in the official file, the notice in the wine dot echo and the notices to property owners. Does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose with regard to this case?
No.
No.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Anderson, I have you queued up to speak. I also see an Andy Gabbert. Is that somebody that's going to speak, be speaking on your behalf or with you? Mr. Anderson. Cole Anderson. Yes, I've got you queued up to speak, Mr. Anderson. I need you to unmute yourself, which it appears that you are. Mr. Gabbert, are you here to speak on behalf of the development as well?
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yes, I am here to uh, speak on behalf of uh, this asphalt.
Okay, I need your, I need your name and address, please.
Yes, Andy Gabbert, uh, with Renaissance Infrastructure Consulting. My address is eighty six fifty three Penrose Line, Lenexa, Kansas, six six two one nine. And I'm actually in the same room as Cole Anderson. Um, so he's along here with me. Um, but uh, you want me to just go ahead and give a kind of a brief synopsis of our project?
Whoever wants to do it, you you do have kind of a spotty connection, so uh, bear with us a little bit.
Okay, we will give it our best shot. Um, is there any chance I can share my screen?
Yes, Janet, I think we've got it moved over. You should be able to. Yes, go ahead and try. Um.
He's still over on the attendee list. We've got need to move him over here.
Uh, there we go. Try now.
Yeah, let me, give me just a second to find you here. There he is.
There we go. Can you guys hear me now?
Yes, and you should be able to um, show your screen now.
Okay, share. Okay, share screen. I'm going to.
Okay, can you guys all see my screen?
Yes.
Whoops. Okay, so we are uh, basically looking at a project that is uh, just east of four thirty five. Um, about one mile off of Cal Drive. It's highlighted here on the screen. Um, and this is where we are proposing to uh, put in a permanent asphalt plant uh, for the use of uh, creating asphalt for the use in construction. Uh. So here on the left side is a uh, a rendering of our site plan. Um, and a little bit about the project or the uh, site itself is the uh, the current use of the site is, and you can kind of see it over here on the right side. Um, it's actually a, it's currently being used as a topsoil strip mine, so there's a lot of exposed area right now. Uh, our, our plan is to come in and kind of fix all that up. Uh, we've proposed to come in and uh, install a kind of a maintenance yard with an asphalt plant, which is what you see here. Uh, we have, do have some stockpile, stockpiles uh, as, as part of the whole operation. And uh, in as well as part of that, we will also be doing an office with a small parking area. And I'll get into that a little bit more. Um, going back to the original site. Uh, the image that you see over on the right side, um, well, first, we've got an example of what a, an asphalt plant looks like. Um, so you can kind of get an idea of what it is that's coming or what we're proposing. And I can blow any of these up if you guys need to. Um, the middle image of what we're showing here is uh, actual image of Bettis Asphalt on the, on the property that we're proposing to do. Um, back in two thousand and eighteen, Bettis Asphalt actually used this property um, under a special use permit as a temporary asphalt plant. Um, and then they operated for three months at that time. Uh, and I don't believe they had any complaints um, during this period. Um, the uh, the original application for this project was for us to come in and just go in with a uh, asphalt plant itself, um, with no office and no parking, um, and very little uh, impact to the site. Um, in our first application, the city came back and, and, and said, you know, if you guys are going to come in, you've got to provide a building, you've got to provide some parking. Um, so Bettis Asphalt took this as an opportunity to say, you know what? Uh, we're going to come in and make permanent residents here uh, in the U G. So they've come in and now are proposing to put in um, nearly a nine thousand square foot office building uh, and garage, which will house employees year round uh, long. Um, so this will be an active site as far as from an office standpoint, year round. Um, from an asphalt use, uh, it's proposed to be used while there is construction going on. Uh, and only a portion of the year because asphalt plants do shut down um, around November through the winter itself. So the asphalt plant is not a year round deal, but the office and uh, maintenance facility is. Um, in the lower right hand corner, you can see a picture or an image of our proposed building. Uh, like I said, it's about nine thousand square feet, um, has an office comp, comp part to it and uh, as well as the uh, the garage facility that you can see on the, on the west side. Um, the uh, the existing zoning for our property is M P one. Uh, and that is uh, this portion here, there is actually a, a two hundred foot wide buffer uh, on the very far west side that we plan to leave in an agricultural state. So it'll, it'll remain agriculture, um, as well as we are also providing a two hundred foot buffer along the south side um, for greenery and existing trees. The uh, that being said, on the west side of the property, there is a large expansive uh, amount of existing trees. Uh, we are proposing to remain those, all of those remain in place. Uh, we're not planning on taking down any trees on the west or the south side. There is a small portion of uh, land up against Cal Drive or yeah, or hi, the highway. Um, where we're going to take the opportunity where we're building a detention basin, we're going to take some of the extra dirt, and we're going to raise that berm that's along the highway, and then we're going to plant some trees on the top of it. That'll increase and further expand the screening uh, from, from the highway, which at this time is is quite significant already, but we're going to expand on that even more. Um, and with that, uh, I, we're open to any questions that you guys may have.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Saying none, we'll go ahead and close the public portion of the meeting. I'm sorry, we'll open the public portion of the meeting. Is there anyone in the audience that wants to speak in favor or in opposition to this proposal? And I'm going to go to Ms. Laura. Bashes?
Yes, that's correct.
Could you go ahead and please state your name and your address, please, for the record?
Yes, Laura Bashes, and the address is seventeen forty South eighty sixth street. So, okay, so I have concern about an asphalt plant being put in close proximity to a residential area. There are people with land in the area with significant allergies. I've spoken with Cole Anderson. He was very gracious and explained that ninety nine point nine of the discharge is clean. However, even though the discharge of pollutants may be less than one percent, the amount being put into the air is of course dependent upon the volume being discharged at any given time. Mister Anderson explained that this is a temporary on and off use of the actual plant depending upon the need for use. But there's no guarantee that the amount of use will remain minimal. Um, one would expect that the company hopes to grow. Um, to allow any business into a residential area, which can have any, any impact upon a resident's health is unacceptable. The C D C has much data about the hazards of asphalt fumes and the manufacture of asphalt. And although Mister Anderson may have indicated that there's technology that does help minimize the health concerns, the information remains on the C D C nonetheless. And that, of course, would indicate that there remains very real health concerns to health, including types of cancers. Um, we've also um, talked with many residents in the neighborhood who have all expressed their concern and stated that they did voice concern in twenty eighteen with a lack of, of success in having their voice heard. Now, we weren't around at that time and don't have any um, details on that, but they did state that they filed petitions and, and information. Um, and they were all unhappy about the plan to push forward the asphalt plant um, on a, on a permanent basis. The tree buffer that was mentioned, um, there is a tree buffer, but it was significantly reduced recently. I don't know by whom. Um, but I just want that to be noted. Um, and then a second, another concern that we have is land value. Mister Anderson indicated that land values in the immediate areas of other plants were not affected. I do not have data on land values in comparison with the larger Kansas City or metropolitan area. I just cannot imagine that land values would not experience disruption when there's an asphalt plant across the street or in the immediate area. I, you know, I just ask that you consider your own home. If a, if an asphalt plant went into your neighborhood and especially across the street from the land that you purchased with the intent of building a home, um, surely you would have concern about the value. I can't imagine people wanting to move into a place with, with an asphalt plant across the street. So, um, I, I have these serious concerns, and I ask that this um, petition, this, this motion not go forward for the rezoning of the asphalt plant. Surely there must be a different non-residential area that can, could be considered for this type of business.
Okay, is that all?
That's all I have.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else that wants to speak in favor of or in opposition to this request? Okay, I thought I saw someone earlier, but I don't see their hand up now, so I will go ahead and close the public portion of the meeting. We'll go, I want to go back to the applicant. Uh, can you address the neighbor's concern with regard to emissions from the plant when it's in operation?
Yes, Cole Anderson here with Bettis Asphalt. Address, P O box sixteen ninety four, Topeka, Kansas, six 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 zero one. Um, our asphalt plants, we operate nine kind of all over the state of Kansas. Um, the modern asphalt plants that we have today use baghouse technology. They have over six hundred bags that filter the particulate matter that is produced from a plant. Um, they are ninety nine point nine something efficient. Uh, they are extremely clean, they're very highly regulated. They are inspected annually by the D O T and the environmental groups. Um. There are no known causes of any health related um, cancers or people getting sick from asphalt plants. We have employees three to five at every plant that have been working at the plants for multiple years who are directly next to these plants. Nobody has ever been sick. There's never been any related illness. Um, I'm not sure where she's getting her, her information. She must have got that from the internet off, you know, probably an existing very old asphalt plant. But I am confident in our operations and how efficient we are and how they operate. Um, we held two neighborhood meetings. Uh, she's the only one that contacted us that was, that had any concerns. Um, I mean, we, we are open to, we want to be a good neighbor, and we are open to work with anybody and help them understand, understand our plants.
Thank you. Just have a quick question for you. What type of noise emission goes on at, at an asphalt plant? Is there, and as far as trucks in and out of there, any type of traffic and then the number of employees that will be working there?
Um, around the plant, there should be around three to five employees. Uh, in the office, there will be about around ten workers there. Um, I mean, noise has never been a concern from where our plants located to any of the property lines. I mean, you shouldn't even be able to hear it.
Okay. Think that answered the other questions that came out, so I'm going to go ahead and go to Director Hand for his comment.
Hey, Mr. Chair, let me just bring up the screen again. Can everybody see the screen again?
Yes.
Okay. So again, this is um, two separate entitlements. One is the master plan amendment from business park to industrial. The other one is from M P one to M P three, the change of zone. This is generally in the kind of Riverview-ish neighborhood along Cal Drive. Um, specifically, it's a, uh, as the applicant had mentioned in their opening comments, it's a sort of a fill site or excavation site for fill dirt, um, that was temporarily used as a batch plant for a couple of years, has since uh, ceased for the last few. Uh, and then what they seek to make permanent. Um, in staff's review, um, we thought of a couple of conditions of approval that I would note um, here tonight, as well as encourage everybody to look at the full list of conditions of approval in the plan. Uh, namely, uh, we asked for a deed restriction so that this, when it gets converted, if it moves forward with a change of zone to M P three, that it be withheld just to this asphalt plant as the allowed use on the site. So essentially what that means is if it's not an asphalt plant, it's got to be, it can't be anything else allowed in, in M P three, um, which is our most intensive industrial use. It's the only zone where a batch plant is allowed specifically. Um, so then it would revert down to M P two and M P one. The adjacent properties are M P two um, to the east adjacent industrial properties surrounding uh, the remainder of the parcel to the north as well as um, to the west, before you get eighty sixth street is all agriculturally zoned properties. Um, specifically to the west, there's a strip of agriculturally zoned property to the west and to the north um, that acts as a two hundred foot um, landscape buffer. So when this change of zone occurs, it'll change all of that, um, the entire parcel. But we asked for that two hundred feet um, buffer to be included. Uh, we've added the buffer on the south side as well as the enhanced landscaping on that part of the trapezoidal piece uh, sort of here that, that abuts Cal Drive to do some additional enhanced landscaping. Um, the applicant had mentioned that it's not just a batch plant, it's also an office. Um, one of the conditions of approval is that that office development um, and building meet all commercial design guideline standards. We have conditions in there specific to dust mitigation, hours of operation, as well as some other screening and landscaping. Um. Aside from what was uh, said tonight, there had been no other um, letters of opposition submitted for this project. We've received no letters of support. There are uh, no N O Vs on the property. Staff recommends approval of these conditions.
Yeah, thank you. Questions for Director Hand? I, I just have one Gunner. Pr- prior to this project, it was being used, was used, it was used temporarily for a batch plant for asphalt. Is that correct?
Uh. Gunner Hunter for plan design. Yes, I think it was that they received a two year S U P and that was ended in I'd have to double check. I believe it was twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen-ish.
So that's when it, that's when it first went into operation?
I'd have to get that to you. I'm not, I don't have it in front of me right now, but yes, I believe it was a two year S U P that ended in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen.
So it was only in operation for two years, and prior to that, it was just vacant ground, vacant ag land?
It had been, yeah, though throughout the whole time, it's been used as a um, we call them donation site for Phil.
All right, so it's been, there's been some sort of, some sort of commercial activity at the site for a, a rather long period of time?
Uh, yeah, I believe it's been, it's been a, a donation site for quite some time.
Okay, all right. So there's been some, something, this is not a new project to the neighborhood or anything like that?
No, and then there's been a couple of more recent developments in the last five years on Ruby Avenue, Avenue specifically. So, um, we think this at the end of this will include a cul-de-sac, as you can see here at the end of Ruby Avenue. Um, again, the building up against it, we believe it'll match the the sort of uh, mini industrial district that's emerged on Ruby Avenue.
Okay, all right, thank you. Commissioner Polly, do you have a question? Go ahead and mute.
Is it too late to ask the applicant a couple of questions?
I will allow it. Go ahead, Mister Gabbert. Are you ready for that? There you go. Okay, go ahead, Commissioner Polly.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that there would be no carbon monoxide or VOCs coming from this plant.
Mister Gabbert or Mister Anderson?
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm not exactly sure. I mean, I know that they are so minimal, they are not regulated.
Okay, so parts per million on carbon monoxide?
I, I don't have, sorry, I, I don't have the figure right in front of me, but again, they're, they're so minimal that they're not regulated by E P A or K D H E.
Okay, thank you.
And can you repeat the uh, the percentage of the, the filter? You, you mentioned the filter was ninety nine point something effective?
Nine seven.
Ninety nine point seven, and I'm sorry.
Ninety nine point nine seven.
Ninety nine point nine seven. Okay, all right, thank you. Uh, Commissioner Jones, question?
Mine was similar to Commissioner Polly's. Uh, just want to confirm and clarify then from the applicant, and then also going back to Gunner that what it sounds like is you all believe that between existing regulations and stipulations for this petition, um, the um, this Bashes' concerns are addressed in effect, effectively. With regard to toxicity, I don't know that that's the word to use, fumes and, and health concerns and conditions for the residential community.
And that was a question for Director Hand, is that correct?
I see, I, I wanted applicant to speak to it too, but then also Gunner as well.
Yes, I mean, we, we operate all over the state of Kansas, near homes, near residents. We, I've have rarely gotten ever a complaint, usually it is concerning trucks, but not anything having to do with any kind of emissions. And we've agreed, we've worked with the, the U G staff and we've agreed to all the conditions and we're willing to work with any residents who have more concerns.
I'm sorry, is that Mr. Gabbard or Mr. Anderson speaking?
That was Mr. Anderson.
Okay, wait, if you guys are going to speak under the same heading, I just need you to announce who's, who's actually speaking so that we have that, that testimony for the record. So the last two comments, were they both made by Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Alright, thank you. This, Christian Jones, did that answer your question, or do you need a follow-up to the director?
I would like Gunner to still follow up to that.
Way in, Director Hand?
This is Gunner Hand, Director of Plenary Design. As it relates to air quality, I believe the applicant's statements, which were, again, some of the stuff that we asked as well during our staff review process, I believe it speaks for itself. I will, I would note that we have asked for air quality monitors on other projects. The issue with an air quality monitor is if it doesn't exceed any established level as defined by E P A, then there is no violation to track because it is not within our ordinances to track those types of particulate matters and/or VOCs. So it would be, we could get the data, we could require them to track the data, but I don't think we would find any violations based on what we understand for the batch plant and the current standards. Nor do I think we, we would, we would we'd have a hard time enforcing that.
Thank you, Gunner.
Further questions for the director? Seeing none, we'll stand for a motion. Excuse me, Commissioner Ernst?
I'll make a motion, I move the Kansas City Planning Commission recommend approval of petition C O Z two, zero, two, one, dash, zero, one, eight, subject to staff stipulations.
A motion for approval made by Commissioner Ernst, is there a second?
Mr. Chairman, could we back up just a little bit? We need to take
I'm sorry, this, this, the first motion will be on the master plan amendment, excuse me. Commissioner Ernst, is that okay?
You're doing master plan amendment first.
Master plan amendment first.
That's fine.
Alright, so motion made to approve the master plan by Commissioner Ernst, is there a second, Commissioner Armstrong?
A second.
Motion made for approval of the master plan made by Commissioner Ernst, seconded by Commissioner Armstrong, any discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Ernst?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Ewing?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Miller?
No.
Muller?
Aye.
Polly?
Aye.
Armstrong?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of the master plan amendment passes seven in favor and one opposed.
Thank you, I'm then now need to entertain a motion on the change of zone. Commissioner Ernst?
I would make a motion on a change of zone.
For approval?
Approval subject to staff stipulations.
Thank you, motion for approval made by Commissioner Ernst. Is there a second, Commissioner Armstrong?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Armstrong, any discussion on the motion for approval for change of zone? Seeing none, roll call.
Ernst?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Ewing?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Miller?
No.
Muller?
Aye.
Polly?
Aye.
Armstrong?
Aye.
Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of the change of zone application subject to the conditions in the staff report passes seven in favor and one opposed.
Thank you, this will be heard once again on September thirtieth before the Board of County Commissioners, assuming that meeting will be by a
Mr. Chairman, our next application is change of zone number C O Z twenty twenty-one, dash, zero, two, six. Marty Arling with Call Valley Engineering. Change of zone from R one B, single family district to A G Agriculture District for a thirty-one acre urban equestrian sanctuary for both horses and residents who reside and traverse there at forty-six hundred Parkview Avenue and forty-five fifty-one Sloan Avenue. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations. The official zoning map for the area in question. The city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question. The staff report and attachments dated September thirteen, twenty twenty-one. The application and other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant in furtherance of the case and contained in the official file. The notice in the wine dot echo and the notices to property owners. Does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose with regard to this case?
No.
Thank you.
Marty Arling, I have you keyed up, ready to speak. If you go ahead, please give us your name, address for the record and tell us about your project.
Yes, Martin Arling with Call Valley Engineering. I am at eighty forty North Oak Trafficway, Kansas City, Missouri, six, four, one, one, eight. And what you have before you is a rezoning for we're, we're going to agricultural to allow for horses and for a stable operation. And actually, the site on which the operation will sit is already rezoned, has been in the past. I think it was last year or the year before. And these are adjacent properties that we're asking to be rezoned to allow the trail to go through there. And at after, you know, assuming we're successful getting the rezoning, one of the stipulations is we're going to combine the properties and create the acreage necessary, because as I said, that the parcel at, I believe the address, I hope to have the address, forty-six hundred Parkview, that is currently ag and able to support a stable other than the size of the property. So once we combine them and get up to the required acreage, we intend to move forward with the final plan and the S U P to allow for the stable. And Amy Struthers is the owner developer, and I believe she should be on the call tonight. She's very passionate about this and can probably speak with more, uh, more oomph on it than a civil engineer can, so she, if she wants something to add.
Okay, Ms. Struthers, I've got you queued up, ready to speak, would you like to make any comment?
This is Amy Struthers, I'm at thirty-one sixteen Dalevin, Kansas City, Kansas, six, six, one, oh, four. I appreciate that, Marty, but you have been doing a great job. Thank you for assisting me in getting this far, this
Okay.
horses in the local community. I don't really have anything else to add to any descriptors, but I'm ready to answer any questions if the community or the board has.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Arling, do you have any final comments?
No, no, just again, if you have any questions for me or for Ms. Struthers, that would be fantastic, we'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, any questions for Ms. Struthers or Mr. Arling from the commission? Commissioner Hill? Go ahead and unmute yourself.
Yes, thank you. I, I just noted in the notes, there was no sanitary sewage. So I would like to hear from these applicants. What, what, could you clarify your plan on the sewage, please?
Yes, this is Martin Arling again. The plan is to go with a septic system and it's going to be pretty minimal use, there's, there's not going to be a lot of residents at this location. And it will have to go through all of the county requirements for a septic system. And that will be done prior to obviously getting the, the permit or the final occupation. Final C O.
Further questions? Seeing none, we'll go to the public, anyone in the audience want to speak in favor of or in opposition to this request, please raise your hand. Seeing none, we'll close the public portion of the meeting, we'll go to Director Hand for his comment.
Amy, Mr. Chair, this is Gunner Hand, Director of Plenary Design. As was mentioned before, this property right here on forty-six hundred Parkview is already zoned ag. We're talking about a two-phase project that, or two phases of a project that includes this parcel, this parcel, this parcel, this parcel and this parcel on Sorter Drive. Phase one only includes Parkview, the road off Sloan, this is a platted Sloan Avenue, as well as this one on thirty-three. So this parcel here is less than five acres, so part of the conditions of approval to rezone to A G would be to either consolidate these two parcels or these two parcels so that they don't have to get a variance. Otherwise, the whole project, if you will, the stables and such are all will go wholly within forty-six hundred. These other properties are sort of the phase one trail system for the, for the horses. If you recall from that previous rezoning about a year and a half ago now, it was to, to take this land bank parcel and combine it with Ms. Bobby Jean Thomas's property here, that did not go through and we're left with parcel that was zoned A G, but now a new project or proposal for that, for that project accordingly. Again, this is in the Sorter Drive area, which is typical of these types of sort of residential large lot agricultural uses. We do note that all of the driveways and parking for the, the development itself need to be paved, but anything off that off that for automobile storage can be obviously gravel moving forward. We ask that they maintain some existing tree canopy while the conservation plan is specifically for horses. It's a heavily wooded area, requires some thinning of the forest to allow for, for the use. So there is a conservation plan attached to this. We note that no signage is allowed. And while this use specifically, the barn stables is allowed in agricultural zone. At some point, when the project turns into something where some of these potential, where the rooms will potentially be rented out, that will require the applicant to come back and get essentially a short-term rental special use permit, but until then, it can operate as stables without any other entitlements. There has been no letters of support nor opposition submitted for this project to date. There are no N O Bs on any of these parcels, staff recommends approval of this phase one.
Any questions for Director Hand? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion. Christian Polly?
Motion to approve, subject to staff stipulations.
Motion to approve made by Commissioner Polly, is there a second, Commissioner Armstrong?
A second.
Seconded by Commissioner Armstrong, any discussion on that motion for approval? Seeing none, roll call.
Ernst?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Ewing?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Miller? Muller?
Aye.
Polly?
Aye.
Armstrong?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of this change of zone, subject to the conditions in the staff report passes eight in favor and none opposed.
Thank you, this will be heard once again on September thirtieth at seven P M before the Board of County Commissioners.
Mr. Chairman, we have three applications that we're going to hear together. Master Plan Amendment, M P L twenty twenty-one, dash, zero, one, eight. Weston Sparks for Ride Forever Skate Park. Master Plan Amendment from low-density residential to community commercial in the citywide master plan at two thirty South Sixty-Fifth Street. Change of zone application, C O Z twenty twenty-one, dash, zero, two, nine. Change of zone from R one, single family district to C P three planned commercial district to convert a warehouse to a skate park and skate school. Special use permit, S P twenty twenty-one, dash, zero, six, seven. Special use permit to operate a skate park and skate school. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations. The official zoning map for the area in question. The city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question. The staff report and attachments dated September thirteen, twenty twenty-one. The application and other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant in furtherance of the case and contained in the official file. The notice in the wine dot echo and the notices to property owners. This time, does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose with regard to this application?
No.
Yes.
Okay.
Commissioner Miller?
The, I heard just in crossing, I didn't learn too much about it, but was in crossing with the applicant's legal counsel.
Alright, thank you. Is Mr. Sparks in the audience, as someone representing the applicant this evening, please raise your hand? Anyone in the audience representing Weston Sparks or Ride Forever Skate Park, please raise your hand? Mr. Hutton? Mr. Hutton, go ahead and unmute yourself, please. There we go.
This is Tom Stible, Bill Hutton and I have been hired by Dan Jansen, the owner of two thirty South Sixty-Fifth Street to represent him.
Okay, I'm sorry, give me your name again, since you're showing up under someone else's name and then also the address.
Thomas Stible, S T I B A L five oh nine Armstrong, Kansas City, Kansas, six, six, one, oh, one.
Go ahead, please.
I'm here with Mr. Spark. And we're prepared to answer questions. I, I wanted to begin myself and then we'll let Mr. Spark speak to address issues that the board may ask. First of all, we agree with staff that the special use permit be approved. We're also asking that the change in zoning be granted or in the alternative be continued and that change to the master plan be granted or the alternative to be continued. We're asking in the alternative because we were asked to join this team so late in the process that we have not had the opportunity to present evidence documentation or argument to the staff on behalf of the property owner. Nevertheless, we believe that this is a case where the planning commission should consider deviating from the recommendation of the staff and grant the property owner the requested changes in the master plan and the change of zoning requested. Here are the reasons why we, we believe that all three of the requests should be granted. First reason is that the residential nature of the neighborhood has already been compromised. Residential property along the south side of Speaker Road directly west of the property already share a property boundary with property zone M two industrial, specifically the twenty-two acre Dunn property along K thirty-two. That property is full of scaffolding, heavy equipment, material handlers and lifts as well as cranes, including one that is erected and stands about a hundred feet above the neighborhood. Incidentally, this property is funded with industrial revenue bonds and is not contributing to the tax base in the neighborhood. And of course, a few houses on the west, on the south side of Speaker Road have the hundred and eighteen acre Amazon M one industrial zone facility directly across the street. It's another non-residential zone site that dominates the landscape of the neighborhood and also is not contributing to neighborhood tax base. Finally, properties on the east side of Sixty-Fifth Street from the subject site, South Gate thirty-two are zoned M two industrial. Given that the residential characteristics of this neighborhood have already been compromised with industrial zoning to have a community commercial site in the neighborhood actually provides the existing residents with protection from approaching industrial uses. If we look closely at the aerial photo provided in the staff report on page twenty-two, you can see the crane and shadow of the crane that is erected on the on the Dunn site and towers over the neighborhood. The photo fairly represents the neighborhood, but cut off of the photo, just two lots to the northwest is the hundred and eighteen acre Amazon site that is zoned industrial. It's not shown to you by staff in the photo, but on the zoning map at the bottom of page twenty-three in the upper left-hand corner, you can see the beginning of the Amazon site, it is in purple. Land use map on page twenty-two, the staff provided to the commission does not seem to be accurate to us. First, the U Z designation is not on the subject property. Second, it fails to Second, it fails to show the hundred-and-eighteen acre Amazon site north of Speaker Road that dominates the neighborhood. And and the map may lead you to believe that the subject property is surrounded by lands or its own residential one. It is not. As we said, dated earlier, the property subject property is bordered in the south and east by property zone M two industrial. Staff reports indicates it's an application of community commercial designation, including the terms of the land use plan. That zoning is intended to provide goods and services to adjacent districts and neighborhoods. That classification allows for grocery stores, medium-sized box stores, twenty-five thousand to seventy-five thousand square feet. Commercial centers and car lots and associated auto repair shops. It's only discouraged uses or industrial uses in business parks while recommending incentives for small-scale locally owned businesses. Parking requirements, design guidelines, and green principles are the same for both this classification and the neighborhood commercial classification of the master plan. According to the land use plan, the neighborhood commercial designation discourages the following activities. Industry uses, business park, adult orientations, nightclubs and bars, drive-through restaurants, and car lots. Additionally, the zoning ordinance prohibit commercially zoned properties from operating morally objectional businesses within five hundred feet of any residentially zoned property. And since the subject property has a common boundary with residentially zoned property, there is no concern with the operation of a business that may be morally objectable to the few residents in the neighborhood. There are three residential lots that share a common boundary with the subject property. By contrast, eleven residential neighborhoods share a boundary with the M two industrial zone done property and at least twelve property share a boundary on or directly across Speaker Road from the Amazon complex. Master Plan lists nine guiding principles on page twenty-five. All do not apply here, but fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth may have some bearing on the current matter. Fifth, six, to protect established neighborhoods from incompatible development. Obviously, this principle was not followed in the development of the Amazon complex. On page twenty-six of the land use plan, the entire length of Speaker Road was recommended to be low-density residential. Obviously, the recommendations of the land use plan were rejected. Character of the neighborhood changed dramatically by rezoning and and amendment granted for the development of the Amazon property. No one can say the Amazon complex is compatible in terms of design density, mass, and scale to adjacent uses recommended by the land use plan, nor is it well-integrated with existing development as recommended by the sixth guiding principle. A contrast, we are requesting a zoning change and land plan amendment for a property with a structure that has existed in the neighborhood since nineteen-seventy-three, although the current owner purchased the property in twenty-eighteen. Seventh guiding principle is to restrict intrusion of intensive land uses within established residential neighborhoods. Intensive uses includes businesses that generate excessive traffic noise, noxious uses, outdoor storage, etc. These actions requested here today do to allow the development of an indoor skate park, a recreational activity that is not being provided for in our community would not be considered an intensive use as described in the land use plan. In fact, it would serve as a buffer from the expansion of industrial uses that have already been allowed to impact residential neighborhood. Finally, the eighth guiding principle seeks to enhance neighborhood cultural amenities and resources. And in doing so, be be a catalyst for reinvestment and to reinforce and enhance neighborhood identity. We believe that in granting these actions requested this evening that the development of the indoor skate park will do those things, providing a recreational service not being provided elsewhere in the community. And it may also bring a sense of community pride by attracting skaters from other communities to the area. We believe that this development meets criteria set on page thirty-four of the land use plan where the plan addresses the category of neighborhood commercial as referenced earlier. This recreational development is the kind of service that is allowed in this designation. It is not a discouraged use. Site has the necessary infrastructure. It would meet the design guidelines. It meets the recommended density requirements and it meets cultural principles as well as the locally owned and operated businesses, opposed to major anchor tenants and will reinforce and enhance an existing property in the neighborhood. We've also reviewed the K thirty-two Tri-City inter-module redevelopment plan. We believe that granting the requested actions here today would be an action that is supported by this plan. First of all, the vision for the K thirty-two corridor is stated on page two of the plan. It states that the vision is to, quote, create a regional destination characterized by green industries, business park, attractive development, downtowns, and recreational areas set within a scenic and friendly environment that is accessible to residents and visitors by walking, biking, riding, transit, and driving. The top priorities identified on page two include targeting redevelopment activities to top priority activity centers, including K thirty-two in historic Barnes Springs near K seven, Fourth Street, Seventy-Eighth Street, and the Sixty-Fifth Street Turner diagonal area. So that plan completed after the land use plan should be considered. It is notable for a couple of reasons. First, it seeks to enhance recreational activities along the K thirty-two corridor and the Sixty-Fifth Street area. In the opinion of community members who participated in the planning's process, recreational activities are top priorities. These actions requested tonight would be a significant step towards accomplishing that recommended action. Second, and perhaps most important finding in that work of the K thirty-two study notes the reality of both past and future housing development in the Sixty-Fifth Street Turner diagonal area. The plan states that housing construction has been decreasing since twenty-ten. It also provides a graph that shows the housing construction on the area of the plan has been essentially a flat line at the bottom of the chart since the nineteen-thirties. So it should be clear that expecting future housing development in the area is not really what it's expected according to this plan. If we want development investment, we should be looking for alternative types of investment in this area.
Is that it?
Not quite. The development of the indoor skate park and skating instruction is precisely the kind of private investment that recreational activities would have been endorsed by this plan if it had been visualized in the community for the time it's planned. It's being developed. It's important to understand that for developer, the granting of the special use permit alone while allowing the use will limit the investment that the owner can make. What we should be wanting here is for there to be long-term capital investment in the properties of the community, but making long-term investment without zoning and master plan amendment is usually not possible. Most capital investment requires amortization of five, ten, fifteen, or twenty years of making long-term investment commitments for the one or two years. Special use permit cannot be reasonably made and almost never financed. The property owner by not granting the zoning and the plan amendment would be hampering for making long-term plans and long-term investment in the property. Expectations that need to be met in order to enhance the value of the property and increase tax revenue for the communities. So we would advocate for the granting of all three of the applications at this time. And if the commission is reluctant to take action that contradicts the recommendation of staff, we would ask you to consider continuing the actions for the master plan and rezoning amendment. As we were not engaged to represent the landowner in time to submit materials or meet with staff and attempt to alleviate staff concerns about these five, these applications. Finally, you know, we'd like to address the items that appear in the staff report.
Mr. Stible, can I can I interrupt you for a minute?
Yes.
Can I ask what you, your applicant wants to do with this property?
Yes.
You know, I think the only, to be perfectly honest, I think that our legal counsel and perhaps Commissioner Miller, who is also an attorney, may be the only two people on this call that understood anything that you've said for the last several minutes. I'd like to know what the applicant wants to do at this property. So far, all I've heard is indoor skate park. I don't know if we're talking about skateboards. I don't know if we're talking about roller skating. What are we talking about here? What do you guys want to do?
I have the applicant here, Jeff.
I'd love to hear from him.
And I'll allow him to explain to you what their what their project at the skate park is.
I would love to hear that.
Weston Sparks, forty-nine, forty-six, Halsey Street, Shawnee, Kansas, six-six, two-on-six. I'm wanting to operate a indoor skate park slash skate school for the youth ages six to sixteen.
And what kind of skating is this?
Skateboarding.
Skateboarding. So it's not roller skating. It's not ice skating. It's it would be skateboarding.
Correct.
Okay. And is this on concrete? Is this on wood floors? Is it strictly indoors or any outdoor?
It's strictly indoors. We have some wooden ramps that can be moved around and yeah, so wood wood ramps.
Okay. All right. So we're talking about an indoor skate park for purposes of skateboarding and in skateboarding instruction, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Mr. Stible wants to go ahead and continue. That's fine, but I just I I really just kind of wanted to know what we're doing here.
Yeah, and and the you know, the 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 what I wanted to do is go through the factors that that would be considered. Because, you know, so many of the things that the staff put in the report, we agree with. We agree with the report that the character of the neighborhood would not be affected by this change much. Buildings in the property have been there since nineteen-seventy-three. We agree the conclusion of the report that the enclave parcel could be compatible with the change requested here. It should be made clear that the to the commission that the property owner and the applicant had visited on occasions with resident in that parcel, which is not indicated to them, or it's for our knowledge, the staff concerned regarding the proposed changes, nor she provided the city staff with a list of any concerns. We agree with this with the staff determination that the removal of the restrictions will not detrimentally affect nearby property. The hours of operation are to be from noon until seven PM. So they are known. They're not unknown. The staff report did indicate that the property is not vacant, but in fact, the eight thousand square feet to be used by the applicant has been vacant. There's a separate building of two thousand square feet that had been rented as a storage facility, but the main building had been vacant for a number of years. We agree with the staff report that the adjacent residential properties to the north is great. The skate park will create a buffer between the industrial uses to the south and to bring in business that many members of the community can actually use. We agree that a master plan amendment is necessary. We agree that the proposed use will not involve water runoff or airborne pollutants as reported by the staff. We agree that all the necessary utilities and services are available. We agree that the business will provide an economic benefit in terms of increasing tax revenue and increased property valuation. And that would be more so if the zoning and master plan amendment are approved. We have asked the property owner if he has reviewed the CDGOD requirements listed on pages twelve to sixteen of the report. And if he, there is a budget, a development budget that can address these concerns, and he has indicated that he is aware of the requirements he's been asked to fulfill, and he has a development budget that will address those.
Chairman, if I could, please, Mr. Stible, you have fifteen minutes to make your presentation. I took out the time that Mr. Carson asked you a question, so you have two minutes remaining.
Very good. It is surprising to us that we can be in so much agreement with so many of the items regarding this application, yet reach a different conclusion as to the recommendation of the staff report. We believe that in a review of the fact that it should be considered by the commission the way that the most finding support, not only granting of the special use permit, but also support approval of the rezoning and the amendment of the master plan. This is a changing neighborhood. The primary reason for change or the approval of the Amazon site and development of the Dunn site. Again, I would I would want to point out how important from the owner of the property is that the rezoning and the master plan amendment are to the property owner because he can't make long-term financial commitments to increase property values based upon a two-year special use permit. So again, we would request approval of the change of zoning. If approved, the ownership will address all the items that the staff recommends for the same reasons we asked the master plan amendment be approved. The ownership agrees to address all the five items recommended by the staff. And and of course, we agree with the staff recommendations, prove the special use permit, and the ownership agrees to all address all nine items the staff has recommended. It's a condition of approval.
Okay, and that concludes your presentation.
Yes.
Any questions for the applicant or his representative? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to go to the public. Anyone in the audience want to speak in favor of or in opposition to this application? Please raise your hand. Seeing none, we'll close the public portion of the meeting. We'll go to Director Hamper for his comment.
Hey, Mr. Chair, this is going to handle playing urban design, and I actually couldn't hit the mute button fast enough. I have a question to start if you don't mind.
Go ahead.
I I heard a lot during that presentation. Thank you for your time. I guess my question is, are you asking for a continuance? Or for Mr. Stible?
Well, we if 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 the if the commission is uncomfortable making a approving the zoning and master plan amendment. We would ask that those two items be continued so that at least we would have an opportunity to visit with staff and and see if we can advocate with staff and we can reach some agreement about those two items. We are not asking for a continuance on the special use permit.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification. Again, so this is going to handle your plan of urban design for this specific case. I will admit that I think staff may have gone down the wrong road with the applicant. I think we had originally requested that they seek a master plan amendment and change the zone, and it wasn't only until deeper into the case that we realized that it probably would have been better, and it certainly is able to proceed only with a special use permit. Again, all of the applicant statements to be considered as a part of this conversation or as part of this agenda item as well. I think what we would just want to specifically note a couple of different things. All of the outcomes here, regardless of what they have, whatever they may or may not be, require a final development plan. We need that final development plan for a couple of reasons. Namely, we left a lot of our original review for commercial design guidelines, landscaping, and other public improvements out of this entitlement to date. It's not to say that we couldn't pick it up later or couldn't pick it up at the Development Review Committee as we typically do on some of these on some of these types of cases. I think there are two issues. Well, before I get to the main issue, I guess we also wanted to to point out a couple of different things. There's a there's a separate request or inquiry on the property to continue some storage unrelated to the business. That storage will require its own SUP on top of this one, which is not in front of you today, but that's something to note that that storage is not allowed currently. And it would need its own SUP moving forward if it were to continue. We talked about hours operation. We talked about commercial design guidelines just off of this property. In fact, you can, this is it right here. That is the Amazon property. So it does about the north side of Speaker Road farther to the west for sure. I think that what staff's recommendation reflects is a further encroachment of non-residential parcels or uses in the residentially zoned land. This, it was stated that this building was formally developed in the seventies. It was developed as a school, which is allowed in residential zones. And so to convert this former school to a skate park, we think should happen only as a special use permit. If you change the entitlement to commercial, specifically community commercial and C three, it dramatically changes this intersection. And it's not this use in particular. It's all the uses that could come thereafter it at a C three level. And while there is certainly encroachment, staff felt that we wanted to move forward with just the SUP, which is why we recommend denial for the master plan amendment and the change of zone. And and we recommend approval of the special use permit. And that's pretty much the gist of it. There's again, a lot of site plan stuff that we need to continue to observe with the with the applicant moving forward. I would recommend that we either vote today or hold it all over. If we want to further If we want to further conversations, if the applicant wants to further conversations with staff on the master plan amendment, change his own, I recommend we also hold over the special use permits, so we can hear it all at once and get it all figured out. Before we make any decisions.
Director Hand, you're, so you're not supportive of approving one and holding over two, or any combination thereof, you either want it all held over, or deal with it all this evening? Who that would be your preference?
It sounds to me like the applicant does not want a denial. They would prefer to not vote on those two, or they would prefer an approval, but absent an approval. Motion tonight, I think they would, they're requesting time to hold over to discuss, I would ask if we gets to that, we hold it all over, not bits and pieces of it.
Thank you, Commissioner Miller.
Director Hand. I, I'm just having a hard time with this, how is this different from the asphalt company we just heard fifteen minutes ago? I mean, we talked about how we, why wouldn't we just do a deed restriction on this?
Good question, there's a, there's a couple of things, that property was already zoned industrial. And so it went to a more intensive industrial, it also already had a batch plant on it. And it was in essence making a temporary batch plant a permanent situation with it. This is zone residential to be rezoned commercial, it also has this weird shape, which you can see here, we would basically be wrapping that single-family home in commercial uses. Which I think. Again, we haven't received any letters in opposition or support for this project. The person who lives in that house definitely got a notice. I don't think they're here tonight, obviously, but I think that's a big concern for us. And. I guess you could do, you could, you could do an S, you could do a change of zone, but you would deed restrict it to a state park. I guess that would get them the type of amortization they would need potentially for that specific use, but. It would leave everything else allowed and C three out. Again, that is effectively giving them an S U P minus the certainty of the long term, which is a big, which admittedly is a big part of it.
Which I agree with, I mean, I just, I feel like if you took the skate park and asphalt company out and looked at the facts, this would be the exact same fact scenario in a way. And that's why I'm just trying to figure out why we're handling these two differently, I guess. Because I, I voted no on the asphalt company, I'll be honest, the reason I did is, I didn't like doing a master plan amendment on a deed restriction, it just didn't make sense to me in my head. Why are we doing a master plan amendment if we're saying it's restricted? So, I, I guess my overall point is, why are we handling these differently, and? I think we should just handle them to, you know, either we do it the same way we did it on the last one, or you allow the change of zone, I mean, it's obviously a commercial building, so I. Those are just my points.
Well, just as clarification, it's a, it's a school. Not, it was never a commercial building.
Well, I'm, I mean, my point is, it may be zoned residential, but a school has never been a residential use, in my opinion. When I look at a school, I think commercial use, I don't think, oh, a single family lives in that building.
Okay, difference of opinion, get it, okay, Commissioner Jones.
I was just gonna say, even though I think Commissioner Miller's question was a good one, with the different nuances I've heard about this case, and a little bit of confusion, the acknowledgement of perhaps staff going a bit down the wrong path, I do think. In erring to the side of caution, a step, take a step back approach and continue this as, and. As opposed to trying to do anything further with it tonight, so it can be straightened out properly.
Thank you, further discussion? Seeing none, is there a motion? Somewhere. Commissioner Jones? Commissioner Jones?
I'm sorry, something happened to my ear, I make a motion to carry over the three petitions associated with this case, which would include. Change of zone. Two zero two one dash zero two nine. And then.
The associated master plan amendment and the associated special use permit.
Exactly.
All right, thank you, motion to carry, or to hold over the three applications. Associated with this property address at two thirty South sixty-fifth was, ends at a thirty-day holdover, Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
All right, thirty-day holdover request made by Commissioner Jones, is there a second, Commissioner Muller?
Yes, second.
Seconded by Commissioner Muller, any discussion on motion for a thirty-day holdover on these three cases involving two thirty South sixty-fifth Street? Commissioner, excuse me, Secretary Parker.
Chairman, I need to have a specific reason as to why we're holding those over, and what we hope to accomplish the next thirty days.
Commissioner Jones, what would you like to see happen in that thirty days, I think I know, but I don't want to put words in your mouth.
Yes, that's okay, there's apparent confusion about the case and. How it should be handled, really, I think, simply put.
Shannon, does that work for you, further clarification for the applicant and the staff to work together?
Okay, that's correct.
Okay, Commissioner Muller, is that okay with you as the second?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you, discussion on motion to hold over for thirty days. Seeing none, roll call, please.
Can I just ask legal counsel if it's okay for us to take all three of these at one time in one motion?
Yes, so long as all the votes are the same on each one.
Okay, thank you, sir. Ernst? Hill?
Hi.
Yui?
Hi.
Jones?
Hi.
Miller? Muller?
Hi.
Paulie?
Hi.
Armstrong?
Hi.
And Mr. Miller, did you vote aye? It was a little, okay, thank you. It was just a little muffled on my end, Mr. Chairman, that motion to hold over the master plan amendment, the change of zone and the special use permit. Until the October eleventh meeting for the applicant and staff to further work together on this project passes eight in favor and none opposed.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, that takes us to our special use permits now, and the first one is special use permit application, S P twenty twenty-one dash zero two seven. Seventy-five twenty-one Nebraska Avenue, special use permit for continuation of an auto sales detailing and light repair. Operation at seventy-five twenty-one Nebraska Avenue. The previous special use permit, S P twenty eighteen dash ninety-one expired on November twenty-ninth, twenty twenty. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case, the city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations. The official zoning map for the area in question, the city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question, the staff report and attachments dated September thirteen, twenty twenty-one. The application, other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant in furtherance of the case contained in the official file. The notice in the wine dot E T code, and the notices to property owners, does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose with regard to this case?
No.
No.
Thank you.
And is there anyone in the audience representing the applicant here for seventy-five twenty-one Nebraska Avenue, please raise your hand? Okay, here we go. Reed, I've got you unmuted to speak, could you go ahead and give us your name and address, please?
My name is Reed Khalil, seventy-three twenty Truce Avenue, Kansas City, Missouri, six four one three one.
Thank you, go ahead and tell us about your project, please.
Sir, I am new to this, so I don't know how to say these things, but I will kind of like, just.
Just tell us what you'd like to do tonight, just.
I'm sorry?
Just tell us what you'd like to do with your, with your, your auto sales and detailing.
No, no, no problem, I. I was a tenant in that building about a year ago, and. We were told when we took over the building as a tenant. That the building was permitted, everything's okay for the auto sales and a limited auto repair. And then. Back in March or April, we get a notice from the owner's architect. And the city that the special use permit expired, they have to redo everything. And the city requested that we stop operation. Seize operation, anyway, we've invested quite a bit in that building, and we were in a bind, didn't know what to do, how to proceed. Because the previous owner didn't really care, eventually we ended up buying the building, stating that we will just continue and do this. Rather than moving out of the building. When we took over as an owner of the building, there was an S U P, which is, this S U P is already in process. And I just basically inherited it, just to put my name on it, not knowing really the details and. What really should be done or how, but the more I researched now, I am, this is going to sound strange, but I will say this. I believe there is no need for this S U P. The uses that we are after in this zoning district are allowable, and they're permitted uses. I don't know why this S U P was initiated, or there is no really use for it, because. As I say, the auto sales and limited automobile repair are really permitted uses in our zoning district. And I am here today just to say, I just need. The board's approval. Whoever, just to agree with me that these uses are permitted uses, and there's really no use for this S U P. I kind of went into it because I didn't know it was already initiated. I didn't get any help from the planning people, but the more I researched the city ordinance, I found out that this S U P is really. Has no merit, you know, the uses that we are after, they're permitted uses in our zoning district.
Okay, so, so before, we'll get you some clarification on that, but I just want to be real clear, so your, your, your business there is auto sales? You do some detailing and some auto repair also?
Well, let me just kind of elaborate on this, the auto sales per se, what is going to happen? We're just going to have vehicles there, but actually, the sales will finalize probably in Kansas City, Missouri. Till we get our license in the city of Kansas, however, the limited automobile repair, it's not for customers. It's really for our own vehicles, so we're not going to repair vehicles for the, you know.
It's not a retail, it's not a retail automotive center.
Yes, sir, yes.
You're going to repair the cars that you're going to sell in Missouri until you get your Kansas license, correct?
Yes, sir, yes, and, and the limited auto repair, we're just going to, we're not going to bring in like damaged vehicles or work on body or anything, no, it just. When you get them from the auction, you know, you just got to see if they need anything. We fix them up, clean them up, and then just get them ready for sale. But the issue, the main issue why I am here, is I just need someone to agree with me. That these are permitted uses in our zoning district, and there is no need for this S U P.
Okay, well, we're going to get some clarification between the staff and the legal counsel on, on whether it is or not for you, but is there anything else that you wanted to say about your request tonight?
That's it.
Okay, great, thank you, any questions for the applicant? From the commission? Saying none, is there anyone in the audience that came tonight to speak? In favor or in opposition to this request or this application, raise your hand. I'm seeing nuns, we're going to go to Director Hand, and may need, Patrick may need legal counsel's. Backup on this, is the, is the use of the property, does it require a special use permit, Gunner?
Auto repair, auto sales of any kind requires a special use permit regardless of the district.
Okay, and you want to go ahead and give us your comments then?
This is going to enter a plan of design. The, the applicant has not provided. The materials that we need to complete our review. The applicant requested, knowing that we were not able to complete our review and would have to subsequently submit a recommendation for denial because of that. Requested that this case be heard regardless this evening, so staff has nothing other than to say we recommend denial.
Okay, is this, is there a possibility that this could be worked out with a thirty-day holdover?
If the applicant were to respond to our draft staff report and provide the materials that we had already requested, I would agree to that, but he has stated to us that he refuses to do so.
Okay. I'm going to go to the applicant here real quick, Mr. Khalil. So we've heard from staff that the permitted, that the, the. The services that you want to provide out of this location do require a special use permit. Do you want to continue on the path to get that permit, or do you want us to deal with the case tonight as it is without the information that we need to be able to possibly approve it for you? Would you prefer to, would you prefer to have a holdover and work with staff in the next thirty days to try to get us to a resolution that works for you and your business, or would you rather us dispense with it this evening? In possibly maybe a negative manner that would, would impact your ability to do business to the location?
Sir, I don't know how to answer this, but I just need to respond to the director's comment, I think it's incorrect. Please, if somebody can review the ordinance section twenty-seven dash four sixty-six. It states very clearly that permitted uses, number two, shops and stores for the sale of. Department store merchandise, new and used automobiles and small and medium trucks. And then on number four, it says permitted uses services such as limited automobile repair.
Okay.
They're both stated there very clearly that they are permitted uses.
Okay, I'm going to, I'm going to ask legal counsel to weigh in, Patrick, can you provide a comment?
So, if the applicant disagrees with the director's interpretation of the code, he has the right to appeal that to the Board of Zoning Appeals, but. I mean, absent that, you know, this body isn't the body to challenge the director's interpretation of the code.
Okay.
So I, I stand with Gunner's interpretation tonight.
Okay, so, legal counsel is giving us the same opinion as the director, Mr. Khalil, but I really just need to hear from you, whether or not you would like a thirty-day. Holdover to try to get some sort of resolution and come back and see us next month and try to, try to get this thing done for you, or do you want us to dispense with it this evening?
Okay, when you say a resolution for this, do you mean that I need to continue with this S U P?
It could be that way, or you could withdraw your application after further discussions with the. Planning and zoning department, or they could give you other avenues, like I said, I believe the legal counsel brought up a Board of Zoning Appeals, if you disagree with the. If the, if you agree with, excuse me, disagree with the answer that was provided you tonight, and you want to seek an appeal.
Can I ask a question to the legal counsel?
Okay, you can ask a brief one, but the bottom line is, we're going to have to deal with this case in one manner, and really, the only choices that we have tonight are to deny it. Based on the lack of information or to hold it over until we can get more information and move it forward, but I am going to allow you to ask your one question before we dispense of the case.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
What is that question for our legal counsel?
Mr. Counsel, are you familiar with section twenty-seven dash four? Mister counsel, are you familiar with section twenty seven dash four sixty six? Section B permitted usage number two and number four.
And he's already commented on that, Mr. Khalil, so what?
I do not have the ordinance in front of me. Uh if you disagree with the director's interpretation, you have thirty days from the date that you receive that interpretation to file an appeal. I don't know whether you're still within your timeframe or what, that's something that you can discuss with the planning department. But I'm not gonna comment on the interpretation that the director has made.
Okay, Mr. Cleo, did, would you, would you wanna attempt a thirty day holdover and see if we can work this out? Or do you want us to, do you want us to to vote on this tonight? Cause I'm afraid if we vote on it tonight, we're not gonna have good news.
Oh, I really, to tell you the truth, do not know how to go about it, but to tell you the truth. It does not, I don't know the ramification of if you denied, can I appeal that to the Board of Appeals? Or zoning appeals? Or do I need the thirty days so I can appeal that to the Board of Zoning Appeals? Uh maybe that's what I need to do, just take the thirty days and then just appeal to the. Board of Zoning Appeals. I welcome any other opinion because this is a clear cut. It's right there, I'm looking at a ten to city ordinance, but I don't know the real process here.
Okay, I'm gonna go to Commissioner Muller who has his hand up.
Uh thank you, Mister Chairman, uh I'm I'm kinda lost here um. So you had, there was a special use permit application on March twenty sixth, I understand a little bit late. I guess I would ask the petitioner why he wouldn't just want to renew his special use permit.
Can I answer that?
Go ahead, I I believe that you have, but go ahead and and restate it.
Oh, no, I I will say I did not wanna go with the renewal. Because the planning department are asking for unbelievable things to be done. We spent a lot of money and we lost a lot of money and uh you know, they're just. They're just asking for so many things that it's gonna cost a lot of money that I don't have right now. And they're not budging in any way, and every day they come up with a new uh requirement. You know, if you look at the old S U P that it was renewed, uh that was initiated in two thousand eighteen. And all the stipulations, they were all completed and done. And then when it it got expired and the new uh S U P came in. Then a whole new requirements came in and some of it is very, very expensive. And that's what got me to start researching and seeing if this is really worth it, not what have you. And then I just found out in the city ordinance, based on what they, you know, they were relating to. That that S U P was really not necessary. So the the answer to your question, it's just a lot of money that they're asking me for things. For example, I just give you an example, they wanted me to put a sidewalk and there is a power pole right there. And the Board of Public Utility told me that I cannot put a sidewalk in underneath their power pole. And these guys are telling me that I have to relocate this power pole so I can put a sidewalk. I I cannot afford all this, this is gonna cost tens, maybe more than tens of thousands of dollars. That's why I start researching this S U P and see if it's really right, not what have you. And it's, it's really does not apply.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and cut you off here, sir, and we're, Commissioner Muller, did your question get answered, at least to the degree that?
You want, yes, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, Gunner, I'm gonna go back to you real quick. Uh our choices tonight to deal with the case or to hold over, am I correct in that?
Those would be my recommendation, yes.
All right, thank you. At this time, I'm gonna entertain a motion on this case. Commissioner Polly.
Motion to hold over for thirty days to allow the applicant in the planning commission to try to reach some better agreement. Or understanding with each other.
Okay, when you say planning commission, you mean the planning department, correct?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Is there a second, is that Commissioner Jones?
A second.
All right, thank you. Motion has been made for a thirty day holdover by Commissioner Polly, seconded by Commissioner Jones. So that the applicant and the planning staff can work together to see if we can achieve a resolution in the next thirty days. Any discussion on that motion for a thirty day holdover? Seeing none, roll call please.
I.
Hill.
I.
Ewing.
I.
Jones.
I.
Miller.
Commissioner Miller. Thank you.
Muller.
Hi.
Polly.
I.
Armstrong.
I.
Just show me that motion to hold over this special use permit until the October eleventh meeting. For the staff and the applicant to further discuss this appu- application. And come to a resolution passes eight in favor and none opposed.
Thank you, good luck to you both.
Our next special use permit is S P twenty twenty one dash zero two nine, Latin Quarters Incorporated. Special use permit for a drinking establishment with live entertainment at five oh eight Kansas Avenue. The previous special use permit S P dash twenty sixteen dash seventy expired on January twenty six, twenty nineteen. Please include the following items part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations, the official zoning map for the area in question. The city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question, the staff report and attachments dated September thirteen, twenty twenty one. The application, other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant in furnace of the case contained in the official file. The notice in the wind dot echo and the notices to property owners. At this time, does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose with regard to this case?
No.
No.
Thank you.
Uh Commissioner Ernst, you had your hand up at the end of the last case, I'm sorry, I missed you, can, can I help you?
Request a break since we're almost halfway through.
Okay, uh can can we hold that break until after this case?
Absolutely.
When we hear this case, we will then take a five minute uh recess. So uh Nadia Griffith or someone representing the applicant, are you available? Please raise your hand so I can call on you. Someone representing Latin Quarters in the audience, Nadia Griffith or Latin Quarters, someone representing. Please raise your hand.
Mister Chairman, uh Paul Heidi has been assisting her with this application. And I see that there's a Jane Heidi on here and I have a feeling that that is him.
Mister Heidi. Mister Heidi, are you in the audience? Are you representing Latin Quarters on this case? Jane Heidi or, I'm sorry, Mister Heidi? Anyone representing Nadia Griffith or Latin Quarters in the audience tonight? Okay, we're gonna go ahead and take the five minute recess that was requested, we're gonna come back. I'm gonna try to see if we can get a hold of somebody representing the applicant on this case and we'll move forward. So at this time, we're gonna take a five minute recess and we'll come back and we'll try to finish this case. Everybody, please mute yourself and your cameras.
Maybe that did it. I touched it, but I didn't, hello? Janet, oh raise hand. There you go. That was him.
I think everyone's.
Hi, Jim. Jim, do you?
I hear you, you'll probably have to wait till Janet comes back.
Fine, at least somebody can hear me. I I'm not skilled at this.
Nor am I, but we'll make it.
Thank you.
Five minutes and Janet will be back.
Oh, thank you. I I'm gonna leave it just like this and maybe she can then. Help me through it.
When you see her come back on the screen. That's when you can ask.
Yes, what should I do?
Just ask, just tell her. Just tell her you're there.
Said Janet.
Yep, I do it all the time. Thank you, sir.
Says lower. That was a Commissioner Ernst, somehow or other, he heard me. And he said, wait till Janet comes on here and then tell her. But see, this says mute, I don't know if it's or not, I'm. Mute, uh now click it.
Mister Heidi, you're on, we're paused for five minutes.
Hi, Gunner. You there?
No, you're muted now.
We are, we're on.
I need, I need it. Are you still on break?
Yeah, we'll be back in just a few minutes to take up your case. You are gonna speak for S P twenty twenty one zero two nine, right?
Gunner, did we get a response from Heidi?
Yeah, he was just speaking, I believe he's figured out his mute button and his hands up right now too, so I I think we're, we got him.
Mister Heidi, go ahead and unmute your, your microphone, please.
Okay, I tried that, did it work?
We can hear you, don't, don't touch anything else.
Thank you, just.
All right, well, we can, we'll convene, we'll, we'll, we'll get to you.
We'll, we'll get there. I'm so challenged here.
No, no, it's no problem at all, takes some getting used to. Okay, do we have everyone back? Turn on your cameras for me, please. Okay, we're going to reconvene the meeting, Commissioner Ernst and Gunner and Patrick, if you please turn your cameras on for me. And we have located Mister Heidi who is going to to uh speak on behalf of the applicant. For S P twenty twenty one dash twenty nine, so Mister Heidi, could you go ahead and give us your name and address, please?
Okay, my name is Joe or Paul, P A U L Heidi, H T I D E. Thirty six twenty five Broadway, Kansas City, Missouri, six four one one.
Okay, can you go and tell us about this project?
Well, this is really a renewal of an S U P. Uh that was initially uh applied for and granted in two thousand and sixteen. It expired in two thousand and nineteen, the owner was not in a position at that time to uh. Operate his restaurant and drinking establishment, so he let it lapse. And uh this year, he renewed his efforts to reopen the drinking establishment and the restaurant. At five oh eight Kansas Avenue. And as a result of that, we knew that we needed to reapply for the S U P. To allow there to be live entertainment on a limited basis, but in the evenings, particularly on the weekends. Uh for that establishment, and that's what uh drove us to make this application. Uh we uh. Oh, I guess you'd say, we've had uh conversations with the fire department in particular to meet their needs for safety. Uh we've had neighborhood meetings, but have not really heard from anybody through those meetings. This is a kind of an industrial section, but it does have, it is a restaurant. It uh does have a drinking establishment license issued by the state of Kansas and also by the unified government. And I think that's about where we're at, uh we um have had a continuance on the S U P hearing. Uh just because of the difficulty of getting uh answers to the staff report. Uh which I think we now uh had about a month ago, uh but uh that's where we are at this point. That's all I have to say right now.
All right, thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Uh Commissioner Miller.
Just quickly, I heard him say that the S U P lapsed. Um were you still doing business during that time?
Yeah. No, we were not, no, we were not doing business. Uh we only restarted the business this year after April. In when we received a uh drinking establishment license and a caterers license uh for the food. But no, we had no business until this year and then it's just the business of the food and a drinking establishment. We haven't really done the. Pursued live entertainment at that point.
Okay.
To your question, sir.
Commissioner Miller, you good?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions of the applicant? Seeing none, we'll, seeing none, we'll go to the public, anyone in the audience that wanna speak, that wants to speak in favor of or in opposition to this request, please raise your hand. Seeing no one, we will close the public portion of the meeting, we'll go to director and get his comment.
Hey, Mr. Chair, this is gonna handle for plan urban design, um this proposal is in the Armoredale area master plan. Armoredale Master Plan area, uh right there on Kansas Avenue, uh it is east of Seventh Street. Some of you might be familiar with it, it's an existing somewhat historic um two-story structure. Right there with adjacent properties, um the case actually did come to us, there were a couple of uh complaints. Related to some of the special events they were having, they've reached their four max for the year. I think they had a Cinco de Mayo and a couple other things. Um so this S U P would suffice for for live entertainment as well as um those types of special events in the future. Um we applied the standard conditions that we have been to uh working through with um staff in the planning commission over the last few months. For all live entertainment um entitlements. This specifically notes that the live entertainment would only happen on weekends and on holidays. And Cinco de Mayo, that is the applicant's language to us that we there then uh put into a condition of approval. So that is live entertainment limited to weekends. We do ask them to follow their landscape plan. I would imagine the original landscape plan, just a couple of the plants had died and hadn't been replaced. So we asked them to follow up with the landscaping plan. We also asked them to repair their surface parking lot, but not go as far as repave. There is some damage. You can almost kind of see it through some of those pictures right there to some of the asphalt. But it does need a restriping as per some ADA parking requirements and things of that nature. So they're gonna restriped their lot. They're gonna repair it. They're gonna replant some stuff. Thus far, we've received no letters of support or opposition. There's a couple of old NOBs on the property, but nothing germane to this case. Staff recommends approval. We're asking to give them just one year to test it based on some of the lapses and things of that nature.
Mr. Jones, question?
Gunner, just for the sake of consistency and given the time, the amount of time that this special use permit has lapsed, and I think I understood the petitioner to say that they, at that time, were not doing business. Should this be considered a continuation of an expired SUP or a totally new one?
No, we looked at it as a totally new one.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
We've carried over from the previous, but because of the long lapse, well over a year, it's a new SUP.
Okay, that's what I wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Technically, Commissioner Jones, all SUPs are new SUPs, even renewals, so.
It's part of the Connolly Rule.
We're asking it to, it is absent.
There you go. Any further questions of the director? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion. Commissioner Jones?
Motion to approve subject staff stipulations and comments.
A motion to approve made by Commissioner Jones. Is there a second? Commissioner Armstrong?
Yes, second.
Thank you. Second in by Commissioner Armstrong. Any discussion on the motion for approval? Seeing none, roll call, please, Janet.
Ernst?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Uy?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Muller?
Aye.
Polly?
Aye.
Armstrong?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of this special use permit for one year, subject to the conditions in the staff report passes eight in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. This will be heard once again on September 30th at 7:00 PM before the Board of County Commissioners.
Our next special use permit is SP 2021-034. A T of a special use permit for liquor, for liquor sales in conjunction with convent, sorry, convenience store gas station at 8537 State Avenue. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations, the official zoning map for the area in question, the city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question, the staff report and attachments dated September 13, 2021, the application, other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant in furtherance of the case and contained in the official file, the notice in the wine dot echo, and the notices to property owners. Does any member of the commission have any contact disclosed with regard to this case?
No.
No.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Abbas?
Hi.
I've got you unmuted. Yeah, ready to speak. So go ahead and give us your name and address, please, and tell us about your project.
My name is Artif Abbas. Address is 6647 Noble Street, Shawnee, Kansas. So what we're doing here is putting a liquor store, there was a liquor store in the past, and what we're doing is doing a renovation and putting a bigger, newer, you know, liquor store, do remodeling, renovation of the gas station. We submitted the plans and everything. That's, that's all we're doing, you know, just, just opening a liquor store and just doing, and renovating the old, old gas station into a nicer looking, you know, gas station with a, with a liquor store. Yep.
Okay, any questions for the applicant? Seeing none, anyone in the audience want to speak in favor of or in opposition to this request, please raise your hand. Seeing none, we'll close the public portion of the meeting. We'll go to staff, get their comment. Director Hand?
Hey, Mr. Chair, this is Gunner Hand, Director of Planning and Urban Design. This special, excuse me, special use permits for the liquor store and its expansion. This is in, I mean, we've been calling it the midtown area, but it's close to Piper, not within the Piper area master plan, but, so it's in the citywide master plan right on State Avenue. It's been there for a long time. It was, the parcel was actually recently subdivided. And as you can see in this aerial, there is a creek that sort of runs along and across its, the rear of the property. That'll come into play in just a second. The applicant has provided various plans and elevations for review of the project, making significant investment in the property and in, and in its expansion, excuse me. We are asking for some additional landscaping, which we can follow up when, at the building permit stage. Specifically, there is some residential uses to the, across the street, but also to the east. So we asked for some additional enhanced landscaping along that buffering. The current property has a couple of like donation bins and other things of that nature outside that were not to code. We've asked them to correct those immediately, but also if they are to continue in the proposed plan, proposed renovations that they be properly enclosed and screened as per commercial design guidelines. In your staff report, there might have been a little bit of confusion amongst design guidelines. This property is designated as a mixed-use property. So while this is not a mixed-use project, it is a mixed-use land use designation. And so we're looking at a multitude of design guidelines to get us to the finished product here. Again, most of the details will be carried over into Development Review Committee. Thus far, to date, I should say that we've received no letters of support nor opposition. There are some old NOBs that speak to the nature of the site as it is currently. Again, we believe that this is an opportunity to up, upgrade the property and, and in there, and thereby address some of those existing issues, signage, some other things of that nature. Staff recommends approval for two years.
Questions for the director? Seeing none, we'll entertain a motion. Motion, please. I'm sorry, I, Commissioner Hill?
I have a question for the director first.
I'm sorry. Yes, please, go ahead.
Okay.
Yeah, absolutely.
Is there, are there any environmental issues at that property due to, it used to be a gas station?
It is not. I think we did look into that. It is not currently designated a brownfield because it's a, it's an active gas station. So usually brownfields don't come into play until it's a old gas station and someone left the tank in there and it hasn't been used forever and so on and so forth. So I think if there, if you notice in the staff report, some of the, we addressed, we noted that, but I think the real environmental issue for us is the creek in the rear, making sure that we stay out of that flood, not a floodway. In fact, let me just double check. I don't think it is a floodway or a flood plain, but it is a creek. So we just tried to, tried to steer clear of that. You can kind of see, and let me go back to the pictures. You can kind of see it's heavily wooded. It also, there's some, there's some terrain that goes, the grade changes from north to south behind the property. It starts to go up a little bit. So really, we asked that they maintain these existing tree stands as a buffer to the residential neighborhood more than anything. And in doing that, they protect that creek and we think addressed all the environmental issues on the site. But until this gas station is no longer a gas station, it will not, it usually will not become a brownfield or have any environmental issues as, as it relates to the tanks because they have to get those tanks inspected. They have to maintain, they have to keep their gas in and all that kind of stuff. So there, there's all kinds of checks and balances for it while it's an active gas station.
Thank you.
Other questions for the director or a motion? Commissioner Ernst?
I move the Kansas City, Kansas City Planning Commission recommend approval of petition SP 2021-034.
A motion to approve made by Commissioner Ernst. Is there a second? Commissioner Miller?
Second.
Okay, so moved a second by Christian Ernst, seconded by Commissioner Miller for approval. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Ernst?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Uy?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Muller?
Aye.
Polly?
Aye.
Armstrong? Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of this special use permit, subject to the conditions in the staff report, passes eight in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. This will be heard once again on September 30th at 7:00 PM before the Board of County Commissioners.
Our next application is special use permit SP 2021-045. James Sullivan with Sullivan Palmer Architects, special use permit for auto storage and maintenance building at 1037 South 26th Street. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations, the official zoning map for the area in question, the city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question, the staff report and attachments dated September 13, 2021, the application and other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant in furtherance of the case and contained in the official file, the notice in the wine dot echo, and the notices to property owners. Does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose with regard to this application?
No. No.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Song. I've got you queued up, ready to speak. Give us your name and address, please. Tell us about your project.
Yes, thank you very much. Jim Sullivan, Sullivan Palmer Architects, 8621 Johnson Drive in Marion, Kansas. Just to briefly go through the site development, our proposal includes a 4,000 square foot building located toward the north end of the property against 26th Street to be used as auto repair. Currently, there's auto repair on the site. There's a number of trucks and that sort of, sort of thing that are being repaired and part of the ongoing business use. We have proposed this building, it's approximately 78 feet from the north property line of the building, allowing a 10-foot buffer zone with landscaping, a parking lot and parking in a drive south of that, allowing some, some buffering and separation between our proposed building and the residential property to the north of us. We propose a phase two on this building to be an additional 4,000 square feet to be located just east of, of the original phase one building. The renovation and upgrade to the site also includes essentially moving the existing screen wall back eight feet on 26th Street, like I said, on the north end of the property, providing that 10-foot buffer space with a screen wall there. Moving the existing screen wall back on the alleyway and including landscaping there as well, and then some additional landscaping on Argentine on the south portion of the property. The, the proposed building location, what it does with an additional curb cut north of that on 26th Street allows trucks to enter the property, to go into the building and to go through the building and then out again on the existing curb cut. So we're not having trucks back up or anything. They, they're not, the alley is not necessary route to exit the site. And so I think we have a pretty good development and circulation on the property. There's an existing two-story building on the south end of the property that as staff recommends that this building be upgraded, we have some additional parking on that. And we just propose that that building's use just be continued at this point. So obviously upgrades to the existing paving for where we have drives and parking, that sort of thing on the site. And I'll be very willing to answer any questions that you might have.
All right, thank you. Questions for the applicant? I am seeing none, so we'll move to the public. Anyone in the audience want to speak in favor of or opposition to this request, please raise your hand. I am not seeing anyone, so we'll close the public portion of the meeting. We'll go to Director Hand and get his comment.
Hey, Mr. Chair, this is Gunner Hand, Director of Planning and Urban Design. I think the applicant covered most of the design-related conditions of approval. I would just note that one of the conditions is that no inoperable vehicles are stored on the property. This is a sort of essentially a maintenance repair business, not a salvage yard. There are quite a few salvage yards in this part of the Argentine neighborhood. So that's something we wanted to make sure it didn't turn into that. And so that is a condition of approval. The applicant mentioned some of the work they are going to do to enhance the existing building. It's important to note that the new building does meet or does need to meet, and we will double check that at building permits, of course, the commercial design guidelines. You can see from on your screen and the site plan, but also through what the applicant previously described. Essentially, right now, there's only a screen setback and landscape buffer on Argentine Boulevard. And we're essentially adding that on all other three sides, including a sidewalk extension down the length of the property on 26th. That is because there are adjacent residential uses to the north and to the east as well as the commercial design guidelines. So it kind of all filters in and we were able to add some additional screening and landscaping along 26th Avenue, 26th Street, excuse me, as well. The other thing I would note that another condition of approval is to repair the alleyway, repave it essentially the length of the property. So it'll go all the way from the north property line down to Argentine Boulevard is a condition of approval. To date, we have received no letters in support or opposition. There are quite a few old, old NOBs that speak to the previous character of the building. And again, we believe the upgrades will address some of those moving forward. Staff recommends approval for two years.
Questions for Director Hand? Seeing none, we'll stand for a motion. Commissioner Miller? Go ahead and mute yourself.
Thank you for that. Move to approve special use permit 2021-045.
A motion to approve made by Commissioner Miller. Is there a second? Commissioner Armstrong?
Second.
Second in by Commissioner Armstrong. Any discussion on motion for approval? Seeing none, roll call.
Ernst?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Uy?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Muller?
Aye.
Polly?
Aye.
Armstrong?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of this special use permit for two years, subject to the conditions in the staff report, passes eight in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. This will be heard once again September 30th, 7:00 PM before the Board of County Commissioners.
Mr. Chairman, our next application is special use permit SP 2021-052. Carina West, special use permit to keep 12 breeding adult ducks at 1921 Nebraska Avenue. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations, the official zoning map for the area in question, the city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question, the staff report and attachments dated September 13, 2021, the application and other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant in furtherance of the case and contained in the official file, the notice in the wine dot echo, and the notices to property owners. Does any member of the commission have any contact concerning this application?
No. No.
Thank you.
Hey, Ms. West, I have you down as local citizen. Is that you?
Yeah, that's me.
Okay, go ahead and give us your name, please, and address, and tell us what you'd like to do here.
My name is Carina West. I am a resident of 1921 Nebraska Avenue, Kansas City, Kansas. My name is Carina West. I am a resident of nineteen twenty-one Nebraska Avenue, Kansas City, Kansas. I am asking for a specially used permit to keep twelve breeding ducks and no more ducklings than allowed by the conservation plan. The conservation plan has not yet specified a number or a definition of what is adult versus what is, uh, uh, juvenile. Uh, the, the plan is simply twelve ducks and occasional babies as they breed. Uh, the reason I am asking for the application is that, uh, duck genetics involves multiple colors. And so I would like to have all of the colors present because each color represents a gene, and it's important to include all the genes. For instance, black plus brown plus blue is a more effective duck. May I use the screen share option?
Sure.
In my presentation?
Yeah, we're going to move you over so that you can share your screen.
All right. Uh, do you need to turn up? Okay, join us, panel.
Ms. West, you should be able to share your screen now.
Go ahead and unmute yourself also if you're having trouble, Ms. West. Ms. West, can you still hear us? Ms. West?
It said unmute, so.
Okay, all right. So now we can hear you again. Are you able to share your screen?
Back to our color genetics. This is a, uh.
We, we can't see your screen yet. You haven't shared your screen.
Okay. Can you see now?
Not yet.
Ms. West, after you hit the green up arrow, it'll ask you what screen or view you want to choose. You can pick a screen or you can pick an app. So there's a couple of choices you have to, there you go.
There you go. Okay, here we go.
So this is a picture of the wetlands or pond and a picture of one of the Cayuga adults up front and some of the babies. And you will see that a baby is much smaller than an adult. And for reference point, uh, a horse weighs tw- one thousand two hundred pounds or twelve hundred pounds. A duck weighs four pounds. And so if you're worried about manu- manure, it turns out that manure is roughly proportional to weight. So in other words, the property that was approved by Mr. uh, Sawyer and Mr. Arling to be a sanctuary for horses on thirty-one acres. Uh, if he is hosting ten horses on thirty-one acres, the equivalent is twenty-five ducks on a quarter of an acre. So remember, these are very small animals. I want to show you one more color. And what I'm saying is the reason my screen sharing got paused here. So this is the next image I want to show, and then I'll stop sharing the screen here. New share. So again, these are the different colors of baby ducks. These are roughly one-week-old baby ducks, which are considerably smaller. You can see the adult up in the corner. So there's silver, blue, chocolate, uh, silver plus chocolate is lavender. Anyway, it's important to have all the colors present in order to have all the genes present. And the reason that I'm asking for twelve ducks is so that all the colors can be present. So that's the end of the screen share. And then I appreciate you listening to this, and remember that fifteen ducks would be standard in Kansas City, Missouri. And KCK, the law is six, simply because a matter of formality. And also, I have done everything that the Wyandotte County Conservation District has asked for. We practice best practices in stormwater management. And, um, so I will end the presentation part of this and move on to question and answer.
Any questions for the applicant? Seeing none, we'll go to the public. Anyone in the audience that came tonight to speak in favor of or in opposition to this request? Seeing none, we'll go to Director Han and get his comment.
Mr. Chair, this is, excuse me, Gunnar Hender to Plan Urban Design. Um, again, as the applicant mentioned, this is a request for twelve breeding ducks. Um, we asked that Ms. West worked with the Conservation District to develop a conservation plan. That conservation plan notes eight mature ducks. I don't know if ducks are monogamous and that forms four breeding pairs or what have you, but, uh, the conservation plan has multiple, um, conditions of approval, um, that we've embedded into our conditions of approval, some of which Ms. West mentioned, whether they're related to the pond or ground cover or her shelter for said ducks. Um, but their recommendation, which is our recommendation, is for eight ducks, which is tailored to the context. This is in the Northeast Area Master Plan on a relatively small parcel, a single-family neighborhood, single-family lot in historic, uh, State Manor District, um, for your reference right there. Um, I'll just double-check my notes. Thus far, we've received no letters in opposition, uh, nor support. There are no NOBs on this property. Uh, staff recommends approval again for eight ducks, um, for two years.
Any questions for, uh, the director? Commissioner Miller?
Uh, I, I just feel I'm going to do my due diligence on the question between eight and twelve because I feel like the applicant's going to want an answer to that, too. Of why specifically are we going eight instead of twelve?
Because the Conservation District, who is the expert that we rely on to tell us how much livestock should be, should fit onto a certain parcel, told us eight.
But I believe that was the reason for the, um, discussion regarding manure and byproducts. So further questions of the director? And any motion does that, that does not require that those ducks be monogamous, does it, Gunnar?
I don't, I don't think so.
Okay, I'm just, I want to make sure.
And again, I think to, to Ms. West's earlier question, I think it's eight mature ducks. So whether they're ducklings or adolescents, I think those are fine, right? It's, they can't reach maturity, or when they reach maturity, you gotta do whatever you do with all those ducklings.
Right. Further, just questions for Director Han, and if not, I will stand for a motion.
Chairman Carson, does, uh, Ms. West have a question, or is her hand just still up? I see her hand up.
Ms. West, did you have a comment?
Yes, I have a question.
Go ahead.
So my question is, the reasoning given for twelve ducks versus eight was manure, and I already provided the data that, uh, the manure is less than, than other items that would already be approved. Furthermore, on following the manure plan as per the conservation plan, I've already done everything they asked for. And so their recommendation for eight, even though I've done everything they asked for, is non-scientific. Furthermore, the data on neutralization of waste by stormwater management practices shows that we can handle up to twenty-five ducks onsite, let alone the eight versus twelve, and that the changing the number from eight to twelve is not scientific. It is not following their own conditions of approval. And the eight versus twelve is, uh, an unnecessary distinction. And those are four very important birds that are needed to preserve both blue and brown and black together. Otherwise, I'm going to have to choose between blue, black, or brown.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Jones?
I just want, Ms. West, I just want to ask in response to that, did you have, uh, direct dialogue with the Conservation Department about, uh, your concern about the eight versus twelve ducks that are allowed?
I did have dialogue with the Wyandotte County Conservation Department about that, and their reasoning was that I do not have any, get this, wetlands plants onsite when I have o- over one thousand two hundred wetlands plants onsite. So their reasoning was flawed and or inaccurate and or based on false data and or political reasons. And I do not appreciate them trying to hurt my farm and hurt my livelihood for basically political reasons.
So you then were not able in the end to work that out with them in terms of your, your disagreement with their position?
Well, she said I had no plants, and I said I had one thousand two hundred plants. So if the Wyandotte County Conservation District can't recognize a wetlands plant when they see it, and it was submitted in writing on my conservation plan.
Further questions of the director? Seeing none, I will stand for a mo- I'm sorry, Commissioner Miller?
I didn't have anything, sorry.
Either questions for the director or a motion, please? Commissioner Ernst?
I move Kansas City Planning Commission recommend approval of petition S. P. Two thousand twenty-one dash oh five two, subject to staff stipulations.
That would be eight ducks, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. Motion has been made for approval from Commissioner Ernst to uphold the, uh, recommendation of staff. Is there a second? Is there a second? Okay, Commissioner Paulie?
A second.
Motion has been seconded by Commissioner Paulie. Now, we can have discussion on the motion for approval as recommended by staff. Any? Seeing none, roll call.
Ernst?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Ewing?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Moller?
Aye.
Paulie?
Aye.
Armstrong?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of this specially used permit, uh, for the eight adult ducks, and the conditions in the staff report passes eight in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. This, I don't believe the applicant is still on the call. I'm not sure if I lost her when I moved her back.
I moved her back over to attendee.
Okay, uh, but I, okay, there we go. Uh, I'm sorry, this will be heard one more time, September thirtieth, before the Board of County Commissioners at seven P. M. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, our next application is specially used permit S. P. Two thousand twenty-one dash zero six two. Gordon Arthur Scholes, the third, with Club Four O Three, specially used permit for a drinking establishment, neighborhood bar with live entertainment at six fourteen Reynolds Avenue. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations, the official zoning map for the area in question, the city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question, the staff report and attachments dated September thirteen, two thousand twenty-one, the application and other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant in furtherance of the case and contained in the official file, the notice in the Wyandotte Echo and the notices to property owners. At this time, does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose with regard to this case?
No.
No.
Thank you.
Mr. Scholes, or someone representing Mr. Scholes in the audience, please raise your hand. Thank you. Folks, when we call your case, if you would raise your hand so I can immediately get you ready and queued up to speak, that would really move things along. Thank you. Mr. Scholes, I've got you ready to go. Go ahead and give us your na- unmute yourself. Give us your name and address. Please tell us about your project.
My name is Gordon Arthur Scholes. Uh, I go by Artie. I live at five two five North Thompson, Kansas City, Kansas, six six one zero one. I have owned and operated the four oh three club for a little over ten years now. Um, spanning two locations. My current location at six fourteen Reynolds, I've been at for over seven years. And, uh, after struggling through COVID, through shutdowns and, um, reduced capacity limits and early closure times and everything else, I have tried to figure out ways to, uh, generate more revenue. And one of the things that I would like to do is do some karaoke or stand-up comedy and potentially live music. Um, I don't have any concrete plans at the moment for any of those things, but, um, I'd like the option to be able to do that, uh, to help myself survive and feed my family. Uh, I do have some, uh, of your staff recommendations I don't necessarily agree with, um, which I'd be happy to go over. Uh, one main one being, uh, closing at one A. M. If I have live music or, or karaoke or stand-up comedy, I don't understand why I would have to close an hour early. Um, it does say that live entertainment must stop by one A. M., which I would be in full agreement with. Uh, I, I probably wouldn't even run it that late, honestly. Um, but I don't know, understand why I would have to close at one A. M. And the other thing would be the handheld ID scanner must be used at all times. Uh, I would have a door guy in the event of we have any live entertainment, and I don't know why they couldn't check IDs. I don't know what the ID scanner does exactly, but I've never seen it used in any other establishments. And a lot of the other things that are staff recommendations are for the two adjoining parcels of property that I do own, but I don't really understand what that has to do with my specific request for six fourteen Reynolds Avenue.
Okay, so you're in, you concur with the other staff recommendations, or you're okay with them, other than you want some clarification on the scanner and closing at one o'clock?
Uh, well, like I said, the, the other recommendations, um, there's a parcel to the east of the parcel that I'm requesting, it's a six oh two Reynolds, um, that does house my trash dumpster, which apparently needs enclosed. Um, although there are several, I mean, I don't know of any of the dumpsters on Strawberry Hill, two of which are located on the sidewalk, uh, that aren't enclosed, and I just don't understand what my, why mine is different than all those others personally. And then there's a recycling dumpster on that property as well that Ripple Glass owns that is there for community use, for the other bars, uh, in the area to use, which there are several, and I don't. They had originally said that I needed enclosed. I don't see it on the new staff recommendations, but they're asking for asphalt and our concrete to be put down in that area. And again, that's a separate parcel of land. I don't, I'm unclear as to what that has to do with, uh, my specially used permit request for six fourteen Reynolds. And I mean, I, I wonder if, if those stipulations for those other two parcels of land, um, are going to be contingent on approval. What if I sell those parcels of land? Do I still, what? Do I still, what happens after that would be a question that I have.
Okay, we'll try to get you some clarification when we get to the staff.
Thank you.
Anything else you'd like to bring up?
No, I think that's it. Well, I mean, I would like to say that in the ten years that I've been in business, I haven't ever have any code violations. I haven't had any tavern disturbances. I haven't had any negative things with A B C or with the K C K police or anything like that. So I'd like to think that I'm an asset to the community. And we've also hosted lots of fundraisers for different events over the years. So I think this would only add to being able to do more fundraising with different events.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any, I'm sorry.
I said, thank you, sorry.
Any questions for the applicant? Seeing none, anyone in the audience want to speak in favor of or in opposition to this request tonight? Please raise your hand. Okay, I've got S H N A Secretary. Go ahead and please give us your name. Unmute yourself. Give us your name and address, please.
Hi, my name's Willie Pale Flaherty. I'm at two seven six North Sixth Street, Kansas City, Kansas, just right up the street from the four oh three club. I'm actually the president of the Strawberry Hill Neighborhood Association. And we submitted a letter already in support of what Artie's trying to do here. And I just want to reiterate what he said and that he's been a a valuable part of the community. And we don't see any problem with what he's doing, especially in relation to what any other bars are doing in the area. It's, you know, it's not like a big ask in our opinion. So we just wanted to go ahead and voice our support there again.
Okay, appreciate it. We do have your letter on file. We appreciate your your testimony. Does anything else you'd like to add?
Sorry, no.
All right, great, thank you. I'm going to go to Pearl King. Go ahead and unmute yourself, please, ma'am, and give us your testimony.
Yes, my name is Pearl King and I live at ten thousand four Northwest Seventy First Street, Kansas City, Missouri, six four one five two. I have known Artie and been involved with Club Four Oh Three Enterprises since the very beginning. He has been, I've I've worked with many bar owners. I've, before I retired, I did many special use permits. And I have to tell you, I can't think of anybody that's more deserving of approval for one. He runs an outstanding business. He's never had any problems. And I think what's always impressed me about him is his dedication to the community. He's, since first starting the business, he's he's lived in Strawberry Hill, has now bought a home in Strawberry Hill and is very active in the community. I can't imagine him wanting to do anything that would be detrimental. One of the things that does concern me is I don't think I've ever done a special use permit for any of the other bars in the past where I've seen so many things that really don't have anything to do with a special use permit. I mean, some of these things, especially on these empty lots or would cost a person thousands and thousands of dollars. And I think you can look at this property and see that Artie's and has continually made improvements and invested into the property where it sits. I don't think he's unwilling to look at doing some of those things in the future, but I think tying them to the special use permit is extremely unfair. And I think if anything, it should be dealt with as a separate issue. I note that there, it says right on the report, there's been no code violations issued here. The other thing that is really of concern to me is the sudden wanting to enforce the one hundred foot from the parking lot ordinance, which I've always had questions about and think that it really should be looked at more individually. I just think that has never been enforced. There's always been a bar here. I'm sure that if that had been made known when he purchased the property, he probably would have can reconsidered it. That's a significant, it it, you may look at it just one hour, but that's a significant detriment when you have, you're right across the street from Missouri, first of all. And then you have so many other local establishments that you're competing with that are going to get to stay open an hour earlier, whose business is right next to residences. So I think this this commission has the ability to waive that, I believe, and and I think that's something that should be done. I think that's extremely unfair, wanting to enforce that this late into the game. I I can answer any questions about the business that you might have. Like I said, I've worked with him from its inception. So I appreciate your time. I know it's been a long night and thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak in favor of or in opposition? Okay, with that, we'll close the public portion of the meeting. We'll go to Director Hand for his comment. And you provided some clarifications regarding the scanners, closing at one o'clock, and the dumpsters.
Yes, this is going to hand Director of Planning or Design. This project is in the central area master plan. It was noted a couple of times, this is the Strawberry Hill neighborhood specifically. While there might be multiple lots underneath this property, it's one parcel. And all of our records show it as one parcel. So as it relates to the dumpsters, dumpsters and things like the ripple glass roll off dumpster need to be on an improved surface and they need to be screened on all three sides. That's what it is. So you can.
It is a requirement of all other establishments, the same thing, correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Unequal enforcement might be an issue, but we're talking about this project in front of us that's looking for an entitlement. And we do those entitlements. We look through the entire, we look through it across the entire property and make sure everything else is in compliance before we issue another entitlement. So everything, I believe, has an access to this case. So specifically, there's one garbage dumpster, there's an existing trash enclosure, it just needs to stay in that trash enclosure. So when we were, when we visited the site, we've seen, I mean, you can see it even in the aerial, it's just sitting over there on the unimproved surface. And here it is right here. I don't know what the applicant wants to do with the ripple glass. I'll admit, I use that ripple glass all the time for my glass recycling, so I'd hate to see it move, but code requires it to be on an improved surface and screened on three sides. We did note some conditions of approval as it relates to, let me get to the site plan here, I guess is the best way to do it. Again, this is one large parcel. This is a, it's been advertised and noted in the staff report as a as a neighborhood establishment, as is a neighborhood establishment. We believe strongly in the walkability of this community and this neighborhood in particular. There is a gap in the sidewalk on Reynolds Avenue. So we'd asked that part of that get filled here as well as the property owner who is responsible for the maintenance of the sidewalks to maintain the existing sidewalks. They've been overgrown to the point where it doesn't even look like there's a sidewalk. There's a lot of brick sidewalks in Strawberry Hill. This is a concrete sidewalk that's been covered over for quite some time. So to make sure that people can walk to the bar, we'd ask that those two things also happen. As it relates to the I D scanners, that's the standard and condition for all of our live entertainment events. We asked that when people come in, it's just live entertainment has a tendency to drum up business, as the applicant said, and drive in new customers to a bar. So when those events are occurring, we asked that they have someone who's checking I Ds with an I D scanner at the front. That's standard practice. I can, I defer to the commission if they wanted to address that specifically for this case. That is within their purview. And then.
Would that be unequal enforcement, unequal enforcement, though, again, considering so many live entertainment venues have come before us and we've required those?
Yep.
All right.
I mean, yeah. And then again, I think the last thing of of specific note for this case in particular, we did note the existing tree stand, which you can save here, which does serve, there's quite a significant grade change from where the building sits on Reynolds and the top of the parcel from the from the southwest corner to the northeast, there's this pretty relatively steep rise. So that bowl effect does protect it from most of the residential neighborhood, the 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 existing tree stand further screens from that side of the residential neighborhood. The code does have a specific requirement that for businesses with outdoor parking or areas, and there is an outdoor patio on this prop, on this property as a part of the business, within a hundred feet, they have to close at one A M. That's the code. So whether it gets unequally enforced, again, is an issue across all of the U G. There are hundreds of thousands of parcels, so we're working through that. I have one zoning enforcement officer. But again, as cases come before us for an entitlement, we look across the entire property to make sure it's in compliance. We look and toss the entire code to make sure that we're conforming to it as we move forward with the project and what's been requested of us. So thus far, as noted by some of the other citizens who spoke up today, we've received no letters in opposition. We've received two letters in support. There are no N O Bs on this property or ever have been. Staff recommends approval for two years with those conditions.
Okay, thank you. Questions for the director, Commissioner Miller?
Director Hand, you kind of cut out for a second on there. Will you go back to explaining the closing at one A M. piece?
It is a specific code section that any business that has outdoor parking or other uses, and in this case, there is an outdoor patio on this property, within a hundred feet of a residential property has to close at one A M. That's, that's the code.
All right, well, you've got a lot of problems in Wyandotte County then.
I'm I'm not saying good, bad, or indifferent, but that's what the code is today.
Other questions for Director Hand? Okay, seeing none, stand for a motion. Commissioner Jones?
Motion to approve the petition, subject to staff stipulations and comments.
Motion to approve, subject to staff stipulations, was made by Commissioner Jones. Is there a second, Commissioner Hill?
I second.
It's moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion for approval, Commissioner Miller?
I'm, I'm just gonna have to say that I can't support this motion only because I know that everyone on this committee knows that every bar and seventy-five percent of the bars I could be given in this city are next door to a house and none of them close at one o'clock. So I I I'm sorry, I just can't support this.
Okay, further discussion? Do you have another comment, Commissioner Miller? Okay. Further discussion? Seeing none, motion on the floor is for approval. Subject to the staff stipulations outlined in the report. Seeing no more discussion, roll call, please.
Ernst?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Ewing?
Oh.
Jones?
Aye.
Miller?
No.
Muller?
No.
Polly?
Aye.
Armstrong?
No.
Well, Mr. Chairman, it is four to four. So I am going to need your vote. It takes five to pass a motion. So with your vote.
Chair votes aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of this special use permit, subject to the conditions in the staff report, passes five in favor, four opposed.
Okay, this will be heard once again before the Board of Commissioners on September thirtieth at seven P M. I'm sorry, before the Board of Commissioners at seven P M. So I'm sure there will be some debate and some some additional information provided during that time at that meeting. So good luck to all. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, our next specially used permit is S P twenty twenty one dash zero six five, Adrian Bortz with Bortz Property Investment LLC. Special use permit for short term rental Airbnb at forty one thirty eight Lloyd Street. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations, the official zoning map for the area in question, the city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question, the staff report and attachments dated September thirteen, twenty twenty one, the application and other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant in furtherance of the case and contained in the official file, the notice in the Wyandotte Echo and the notices to property owners. Does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose with regard to this application?
No.
No.
Thank you.
Ms. Bortz, I've got you queued up, ready to speak. Give us your name, please, and address, and tell us about your project.
Yeah, my name's Adrian Bortz. My address is ninety eight thirty two Outlook Drive, Overland Park, six six two zero seven. And we are looking to do a short term rental Airbnb at the address forty one thirty eight Lloyd Avenue in Kansas City, Kansas.
Okay, anything else you want to add? Have you done this before? How about, how about management? Are you managing it yourself? Do you have onsite management or someone who lives closer than you do to the property?
We live within ten minutes down Mission. We have done this before. I currently have a short term, or sorry, a special use permit with my mom at Gable Rentals LLC near Legends. We have been running that one for three years. Technically five, but have had the permit since the permit process has been rolled out. We haven't had any complaints. We're very diligent about the guests we screen. We're onsite, we do most of the cleanings. We do have some cleaning personnel that are local to Kansas City and in the Wyandotte area. That could be on premises even quicker than we are. But we like to manage them our own. We do all the maintenance and we're there within ten minutes if there's an issue.
Okay. Any questions for the applicant? Seeing none, anyone in the audience want to speak in favor of or in opposition to this request? Please raise your hand. Okay, Ms. West, did you want to speak in favor of this or in opposition to this request?
I do.
Okay, yes, go ahead, please.
I want to speak about differential enforcement that some people are allowed to have certain things in place and follow everything recommended.
Okay, Ms. West, I'm going to go ahead and mute you because we're talking about this particular case. We're not talking about your case any further. So I'm going to go ahead and cut off that comment. If you have questions or you want to talk about unequal treatment, you need to follow up with the staff tomorrow, okay? But I'm not going to, I'm not going to allow this to go on at the meeting. So anyone want to speak in favor of or in opposition to this, to this application? Please raise your hand. Facing none, we'll go to staff and we'll get staff comment.
Ms. Chair, this is going to hand Director of Planning or Design. Again, this is a short term rental. This is in the Rosedale neighborhood, Rosedale area master plan. Right off Lloyd Street, it's a smaller parcel just behind the buildings on West Forty Second Avenue. We've been trying to, we did this last time, we've been trying to add these exhibits for presentation for all short term rentals. We mapped the other short term rentals in Rosedale. And if you can follow my cursor, this is Lloyd Street. And this is where the property is. So there is no short term rental on Lloyd. There is a cluster of them relatively close. Relatively close. Relatively close to the proposal, but again, no on Lloyd Street. There's also, I think it's important to note. Currently, we have no policy on density of short-term rentals in the unified government. This is a couple pictures of the house. They are asking for a maximum of four guests and a maximum of two cars on the property at one time. During rentals, excuse me, during rentals. There has, staff has received no letters in support nor opposition. There's a couple old N O Bs about weeds, but it looks like it's. Been well maintained since the current, or since the applicants own the property. Because they are not onsite or this is not a room in their house, more specifically. It is our policy to move forward with the recommendation of one year for approval.
Questions for the Director? Secretary Parker?
Mr. Chairman, before you go on to the vote, would you, I have an email from Aaron Striker about. A gentleman that was going to just call in tonight, and I just want to make sure that we don't miss him. Would you mind asking if a Gary Murray is in the meeting tonight and wants to speak?
Of course, yes. I, I thought we might hear. No, no problem. I thought we might hear from Aaron. So that's why my pause was a little longer for public comment, but I'm sorry, what was the name again?
His name is Gary Murray.
Mister Gary Murray, are you in the audience tonight? If you would, please raise your hand. Everybody's got a name except for one phone number, but Gary Murray.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I do have total of one phone call, but I believe that's the one that has the phone number. Gary Murray, one, one last call. Mister Murray, are you in the audience? Raise your hand. Okay, I don't see them. And I'm sorry, where was I? Was it Director Hand's comment? All right, we just finished. Questions for Director Hand? Seeing none, I will stand for a motion. Commissioner Polly?
Motion to approve subject to staff stipulation.
Motion to approve made by Commissioner Polly. Is there a second Commissioner Jones?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Jones. Any discussion on that motion for approval? Seeing none, roll call please.
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Ewing?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Muller?
Oh, aye.
Polly?
Aye.
Armstrong?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of this special use permit. Subject to the conditions in the staff report passes eight in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. This will be heard once again, September thirtieth, seven P M before the Board of County Commissioners.
Mr. Chairman, our next application is special use permit, S P twenty twenty-one dash zero six six. Oscar Flores, special use permit for a kennel and dog daycare and boarding operation. At forty oh one North Seventy-fourth Street. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations, the official zoning map for the area in question. The city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question, the staff report and attachments dated September thirteen, twenty twenty-one. The application, other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant. In furtherance of the case and contained in the official file, the notice in the wine dot echo and the notices to property owners. Does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose with regard to this case?
No.
No.
Thank you.
Okay, Mister Flores, we've got you queued up, ready to speak. I told you we'd get to you. I just didn't think it was gonna be three and a half hours later. We, we, we got you. We're ready for you.
So, yeah, my name's Oscar Flores. I hope everybody's doing well tonight. It's my first time doing this.
Well, you can't tell. You can't tell. So go ahead and give us your address, please.
My address is four zero zero one North Seventy-fourth Street on Kansas City, Kansas.
Tell us what you'd like to do.
I like to open up a doggy daycare and boarding. You know, where we would just be kind of picking up dogs, playing with dogs, taking them back home. Basically, a boarding, of course, would be overnight. Where they would be staying, you know, whenever people go out of town or whatever and. That's pretty much it. It would just be a daycare boarding and that's it.
And you, you mentioned you'll be, you, you, you offer pickup and, and drop-off service?
Yeah, I, I, it would be a strictly pickup and drop-off service, so we would. Technically drive to your house and pick up your dog and then at the end of the day, drop them off. Or at the end of your trip, bring them back whatever X amount of days later and drop them back off.
So kind of like a doggy Uber, huh?
Yep, yeah, there you go.
Maybe we can call that a doober or something like that. Okay, any questions for Mister Flores? See, Mister Ernst, you're not the only funny one around here. Okay, we're gonna go to the public. Anyone in the audience want to speak in favor of or in opposition to this request? Please raise your hand. Okay, seeing none, we will close the public portion of the meeting. We'll go to staff and get their comment.
Hey, Mr. Chair, this is gonna end Director Planner.
Go ahead, Director Hand.
So this case is in the, I mean, it's near Wyandotte County Lake, but it's, it's in an area that doesn't have an area plan. We generally can call it north midtown. I think it's probably named something else, but. Right off Seventy-fourth, the property actually has two access points. You can access it off of Seventy-third Street and Seventy-fourth. But because the pickup and drop-off will not happen on the site, it'll be a delivery service essentially, as you mentioned. That is somewhat of a moot point. You can see a picture of the site here. This was a former doggy daycare prior to the previous owner or maybe two owners previous to this one. There was an S U P on this property for the exact same use. We did look into that case just to kind of pick up where, where it left off as it is essentially the same facility. We're, we're saying that this will be ten dogs max. That the area the dogs will be running has to be fenced, so we don't lose any dogs. You can kind of see that fenced-in area right here. We also call for regular waste pickup of the area where the dogs will, will be staying. We did receive a letter in support of this application. We received no letters in opposition. There are no N O Bs on the property. Staff recommends approval for two years.
Any questions for the Director? Seeing none, we'll stand for a motion. Commissioner Jones?
Motion to approve petition number S P two zero two one dash zero six six, subject to staff comments and stipulations.
Okay, motion made for approval by Commissioner Jones. Is there a second Commissioner Ernst?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Commissioner Ernst. Any discussion on that motion for approval? I see one, Commissioner Ernst. Nope, okay, any discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Ewing?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Muller?
Aye.
Polly?
Aye.
Armstrong?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of this special use permit. Subject to the conditions in the staff report passes eight in favor and none opposed.
And Mister Flores, this will be heard once again on September thirtieth at seven P M before the Board of Commissioners. If you do, if you do as well with them as you did with us tonight, you shouldn't have any problem.
I appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
You bet. Good night.
Oh, good night.
Mister Chairman, we have two applications that we are going to hear together. Master Plan Amendment, M P L twenty twenty-one dash zero one four. Ron Wu, Master Plan Amendment from low-density residential to medium-density residential. The citywide master plan at six oh nine and six eleven South Seventy-Fifth Street. And Master Plan Amendment, M P L twenty twenty-one dash zero one five. Ron Wu, Master Plan Amendment from low-density residential to medium-density residential. Citywide master plan at six seventeen and six nineteen South Seventy-Fifth Street. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations, the official zoning map for the area in question. The city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question, the staff report and attachments dated September thirteen, twenty twenty-one. The application, other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant. In furtherance of the case and contained in the official file, the notice in the wine dot echo and the notices to property owners. At this time, does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose with regard to this case?
No.
Thank you.
Okay, Mister Wu, I've got you queued up to speak. Go ahead and give us your name and address and why don't you go ahead and tell us what you want to do with both of these parcels?
Sure, Ron Wu, three zero four Shadow Oaks, Irvine, California, nine two six one eight. Commissioner, board members and staff, I really appreciate your time tonight. I'll try to keep this sweet. Our short and sweet as my application for the zone change was heard about a month ago. This is, currently there are existing duplexes on these two addresses and the old zoning was R one. And this is to change the zoning to the correct zoning to R two. My changes zone application was approved last month and this is the corresponding master plan amendment to make the rezone official.
Okay, any questions for the applicant? Seeing none, anyone in the audience that want to speak in favor of or in opposition to this request tonight? Seeing none, we'll close the public portion of the meeting. We'll go to Director Hand and get his comment.
Hey, Mr. Chair, this is gonna end Director Planner Design. As the applicant mentions, these are follow-up cases to, to changes zones that were approved. Last month, it was a condition of approval that they, they come through for a master plan amendment. If you recall at that time. Staff had an issue with the noticing, so we couldn't get them batched together, but we went ahead and moved forward with the change of zone. For Mister Wu, so he can move forward with the sale of these, the purchase of these properties and moving forward. There's the same condition on both planetary. Same case, essentially, they're directly adjacent to one another. And again, these are master plan amendments from low density to medium density to. Which is what they should have been when they originally built the duplexes. So those are the appropriate both zones and master plan menus designations for a duplex. Staff recommends approval of both.
Okay, questions for the Director? Seeing none, I will stand for a motion on six oh nine South Seventy-Fifth, Master Plan Amendment twenty twenty-one dash zero one four. Sorry, excuse me. Commissioner Jones?
Motion to approve. Subject to staff stipulations and comments.
Motion to approve made by Commissioner Jones is that a second Commissioner Polly?
Okay.
Seconded by Commissioner Polly. Any discussion on six oh nine South Seventy-Fifth? Seeing none, roll call.
Ernst?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Ewing?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Muller?
Aye.
Polly?
Aye.
Armstrong?
Aye.
Mister Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of Master Plan Amendment fourteen. Subject to the conditions in the staff report passes eight in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. And now I will entertain a motion on Master Plan Amendment twenty twenty-one dash zero one five for six seventeen South Seventy-Fifth Street. Commissioner Jones?
Motion to approve subject to staff stipulations and comments.
Okay, motion to approve made by Commissioner Jones. Is, is there a second Commissioner Hill?
I second.
Seconded by Commissioner Hill. Any discussion on six seventeen South Seventy-Fifth? Seeing none, roll call.
Ernst?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Ewing?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Muller?
Mister Muller?
Sorry, aye.
Thank you.
Polly?
Aye.
Armstrong?
Aye.
Mister Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of this master plan. Subject to the conditions in the staff report passes eight in favor and none opposed.
Thank you, Mister Wu. These, both of these cases will be heard once again, September thirtieth, seven P M before the Board of County Commissioners.
Thanks so much.
All right, thank you.
Mister Chairman, that concludes the applications. We have two more items on our agenda. The first one is M P L twenty twenty-one dash zero two zero. Planning and urban design and amendment to modify section twenty-seven, division five, subdivision three. The floodplain district to allow after the fact permitting of structures within the floodplain. That conform to the ordinance at the time they were built.
And this would be to Director Hand?
Hey, Mr. Chair, this is gonna end Director Planner Design. So we have an amendment to the floodplain ordinance in front of you. There's actually two changes. The first change is as enumerated by Ms. Parker. So essentially, we have a situation where. Fifteen years ago, when somebody built something in the, in the floodplain, they did not get a building permit. And now they are seeking retroactive building permits. They cannot get those unless we make this change. So it's a bit of a backwards approach here, but we did work with FEMA and the state agency in charge of. Overseen the floodplain ordinance. And they didn't have any problems with this. Essentially, what we're allowing is that, is that property owner to go back and get retroactive building permits. So long as when they built that thing. That it met all the requirements of the floodplain map and the floodplain ordinance at that time. We also put a sunset date on that to the end of twenty twenty-two. There's very specifically one applicant that we know that's gonna follow up with this. But we'll make sure that we reach out to others and potential, with the potential opportunity to retroactively get their building permits as well. So we didn't want to leave this one open-ended. We put a closed date on it because it was very specifically for us, for a, a, a single property owner. The second thing is in our review with the state, they did a comprehensive review over a floodplain ordinance. And they said that one of our other. Parts of the code was currently out of date with karma, current FEMA standards. In the code, there's a, there's a section that basically says that you can, you can build something so long as it's eighteen inches above. The base flood elevation. It then proceeds to say you can do it, you can make that measurement a different way. And FEMA said you can no longer make that measurement a different way. It's gotta be eighteen. Technically, their requirement is twelve. We go above and beyond that so that we can have a lower flood insurance rate in the county. It's called a C R E S score and that, that eighteen inches gains us enough points to get us to the next level of rate reductions for floods. Flood insurance, excuse me, in the, in the, in the Wyandotte County. So we essentially just eliminate that other provision completely and stick with the eighteen inches above base flood elevation. So with that, we recommend approval. Again, this does not impact our flood insurance at all. It will sunset in a little over a year and we get a clean up, a little piece of the floodplain ordinance while we're at it. Happy to take in questions.
Questions for the Director? Okay, and we need a motion corrected.
Yes, please.
Sir, any questions or a motion? What, you guys haven't been here long enough? There we go, Commissioner Ernst.
I move the Kansas City, Kansas City Planning Commission recommend approval of zoning court amendment.
Thank you. Is there a second Commissioner Jones?
Yes, second.
Motion seconded by Commissioner Jones. Any discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, roll call.
Ernst?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Ewing?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Muller?
Aye.
Polly?
Aye.
Armstrong?
Aye.
Mister Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of the ordinance amendment passes eight in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. Will this be heard at the Board of Commissioners?
Yes, sir, it will.
Okay, seven P M on September thirtieth. And I believe we have one last final.
Yes, we do. We, this is the last item on the agenda tonight. It is the presentation of the Armored Hill area master plan.
And again, Director Hand?
Hey, Mr. Chair, this is gonna end Director Planner Design. Commissioners, I just wanted to thank you for bearing with us through a long agenda. I know that it's never good to have. Commissioners, I just wanted to thank you for bearing with us through a long agenda. I know that it's never good to have a long presentation at the end of the long meeting. We do have a quick fifteen minute presentation of what we've done thus far for Armored Dale. This is information only. We hope to come back to the planning commission in October and seek a vote of recommendation. To approve to the Board of Commissioners. Essentially, what we're going to do here is we're going to give you an overview of the process to date. We're going to try to drill down just a little bit into the strategies we've developed for Armored Dale. We will then go over kind of next steps. Our intent is to, we haven't. Finished the draft plan yet, but it's going to be done tomorrow. So we're going to hopefully going to send you all and the Board of Commissioners. We did a presentation at the Standing Committee, Neighborhood and Community Development Standing Committee right before this meeting earlier today. So we're kind of doing it all at once, if you will. The the intent is to give you guys that draft plan, give you a date certain to give us comments back so that we can have those incorporated. For our next meeting on October eleventh. So without further ado, I'm going to introduce with me, I have both Kim Portillo. Who is the lead of our advanced planning divisions. She's been the project manager for the Armored Dale. Area master plan update process as well as the consultants that we and their team. Mr. Andrew Magel is going to give us a presentation. So I'm going to stop sharing. We're going to pass on. We'll do this. You guys have any questions, let us know. Otherwise, just sit back, let it sink in. And learn a little bit more about Armored Dale.
Thank you.
Can I have permission to share my screen, please? All right, that should work. Can everyone see my PDF here?
Yes.
I've been on this call since six thirty or so for solidarity. And so we're all in the same boat and I'm going to move quickly. I'm this year, I've been working anyway, so it's been kind of like a informative podcast. I've been listening along. I learned a lot.
Flattery is only going to get you so far, sir.
So here, here we are, hour four, let's go. Armored Dale area master plan. We started this process. I'm also tired now. This is a, we're in about month nine of the Armored Dale area master plan update. We started with a pretty long site analysis phase. It included a significant amount of community engagement, initial outreach. And conversations with with folks to, you know, get to know. Essentially, current day and the hundred, you know, twenty five, forty year history of Armored Dale. We pivoted to what we're calling this phase two draft master plan that we've been working on this summer. And as Gunner said, are planning to issue tomorrow. And that will will collect comments for that for incorporation into the final master plan for adoption. We started, so I guess kind of a snapshot of where exactly we are in the schedule. We've been meeting monthly with a steering committee that was assembled before the project began. Of Armored Dale residents and stakeholders. We just had that informational presentation at five thirty today or five, I can't remember, to the neighborhood. Community development standing committee. Here's this presentation to you all. We'll make these edits and then we'll come back around September thirtieth. And for the final planning commission presentation, October eleventh and twenty eighth, that's our standing schedule. What I wanted to do quickly is just run through this document we're about to issue. All told, will be about three hundred pages of information and design and proposals for Armored Dale. This is in contrast to the single PDF from page, one page document from nineteen. The one map from nineteen seventy nine, this is about three hundred pages of really rigorous. Effort to try to catch up, if you will, for where where Armored Dale is in twenty twenty one. And then again, a very fascinating and complex place. So what I wanted to just go through quickly was. The report outlined, so then you can flip through this whole report on your own. But what it is is essentially overview of the community outreach process. We go through these five focus areas related to the Armored Dale area. And then we'll have this appendix also that really underpins everything in the master plan related to site analysis, community engagement. Not going to read all of this, but just to show that the first four months that I was speaking about, you know, with this steering committee, that's about twenty, twenty five people. We've had the monthly meetings with them, but we also individually met with and interviewed. And had about a half hour, hour long conversation with everyone in that group, maybe not everyone, but a lot of the group. And while we were going through those three or four months with meetings and learning about new resources and stories and histories, we also started. Yeah, doing our own deep dive into the history of Armored Dale. Both, you know, looking at this, starting from the late eighteen hundreds, you see in the image above to current day and kind of how we we got here. And, you know, Armored Dale is 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 a hundred percent tied into the history of Kansas City. And so you see this, the the story of the stockyards, the story of meatpacking, the story of. Labor movements and strikes. And here in the bottom right, you can see the Armored Dale bathhouse that is, it's really neat to see that sign that still says. I believe, Community Bath House, Armored Dale Bath House, that is now the Armored Dale Community Center a hundred years later. But also this legacy of immigration and the Latin American, Mexican American. Community essentially coming to the forefront of Armored Dale in nineteen forties and that you still see. This, the presence of this, like almost seventy percent Hispanic population in Armored Dale. With a long legacy of Mexican American baseball and community owned businesses like you see in the upper left and the upper right. Particularly striking, as we all know, Armored Dale resides entirely in the Kansas River and Missouri River floodplain, which is really, you know, unique for a residential area. Was devastated by numerous floods, most recently the nineteen fifty one flood, but also famously a O three and O eight. You know, these floods. Displaced much of the the neighborhood and communities at those times. And then also just allowed like the exacerbation of isolation and segregation and the target of. Urban renewal strategies to displace communities and produce high rise housing. That ultimately failed on the right. You see the redlining maps on the left. But what did succeed was at least the kind of condensing of the Armored Dale neighborhood west of Seventh Street. The introduction of new industrial parcels east of Seventh Street. And to what leading to, you know, a current land use map, as you see here of essentially this. Neighborhood that's been chipped away at the edges and completely surrounded by industry railroad interstates. But essentially, yeah, this this ring of industry all around the neighborhood where you, so you see this condition throughout Armored Dale. Where the residential neighborhood abuts industrial uses on all sides. And again, this encroachment. Of this edge where some of these low value or low use industries like tire stacking. Begin to also eat up parcels on the edge of the neighborhood. There's also just a general legacy of, I guess, underserviced or provided. Infrastructure ranging from sidewalks to streetlights to paving alleys, just a long list of kind of basic infrastructural services that. You know, Armored Dale has effectively lived in limbo for the last forty or so years. During our economic development workshop. You know, we heard a really specific anecdote from Greg Kendall where if a business was looking to relocate the wine dot county and there was a conversation about. Recruitment to certain areas, there wasn't ever the definitive way anyone could say, invest in Armored Dale, open a grocery store. It's going to be here to stay. Armored Dale is going to persist as a community. The answer to that question was, we just don't know. You know, the legacy of Armored Dale has always been one of of essentially limbo. And not knowing whether the neighborhood would continue on or ultimately be erased. And the part of this master plan is to declare now in twenty twenty one that Armored Dale has made it this far, they're not going anywhere. And so we need to essentially catch up with providing and open announce that Armored Dale is officially, you know, open for business. That will have ideally a significant impact on what you see here with the the eighteen eighty eight outline of the neighborhood. And the the smaller dash red line, but then this condensing of the neighborhood and then the hollowing out of the neighborhood through disinvestment. Where you see all the blue parcels of vacant land throughout. So you see a neighborhood that's gone from eighteen thousand people a century ago to about twenty five hundred right now. The latest stats show that's also somewhere around six hundred children in the neighborhood, which is also a pretty amazing stat that really goes to show like the. The kind of the the family oriented nature of the community in Armored Dale and also why there's a great daycare. John Fisk Elementary is a great school. So and then partners in this process. Other than that, you know, there's a there's a kind of astonishing lack of healthcare amenities or healthy food with the only grocery store leaving the neighborhood. There's some strong. Community assets like cross lines or we've met with, you know, Pastor Gary. And I can't remember the exact name of the central. The which of the churches it was, but also the A R A. But there's just a limited constellation of of two parks, a few churches. But, you know, not really, no police station, libraries, museums or other kind of community resources. So like essentially coming through this five or six months of analysis and engagement. We started to build this image of Armored Dale in this kind of downward cycle that was essentially perpetuating itself. With these six words on the left from isolation, vulnerability, segregation, being neglected, what leads to deterioration and disinvestment. And that that's always been due to the fact that there's been no clarity or commitment to Armored Dale's future. And the idea of the master planning process and where we are now is to stop and ideally put in place an upward cycle. Where there's a commitment to Armored Dale's future and to turn all of these words into accessible, safe and powered, included, attractive and simulated. With projects that are by and for and of the Armored Dale community. And so we see these images on this slide of a healthy, connected recreational. Place with healthy food and local businesses and a library and access to Kansas River and public spaces and new houses. All the things that any community would strive for. And then you see this image in the upper right and that is also in the context as it historically always has been. And in balance with this logistics or industrial perimeter in some way, but not living at the kind of. The lower hand, I guess, due to the to that image. So the outreach, the our stakeholder engagement process has been multifaceted with an outreach team. We've been working with online platforms, putting surveys, posters and postcards, a website, several workshops. And again, steering committee meetings with community leaders. The outreach team's job has been to, as Armored Dale residents that we've hired and paid as part of our planning process. Has been to, you know, go door to door and hear directly from Armored Dale residents, things that. A place that hasn't seen a lot of, you know, master planning attention since nineteen seventy nine. That we thought this would be a great way to have honest conversations about the community's priorities. So we worked with this group that you see on the right, who were going around. And soliciting surveys and directing people to the website, filling out postcards, there were posters, they hung in a lot of different businesses around Armored Dale. Based upon this campaign we built around this idea of Armored Dale strong. This map shows all of the locations where we collected, I think. Total of ninety two surveys, but fifty four like in person, in home or on the sidewalk surveys is pretty strong. As you can see in the the map of where these surveys were collected. We hosted two workshops that included a lot of U G staff, philanthropic leaders and local residents. And one of them, they were both on Zoom. This was in March. One was focused on health and safety. And the second, these were kind of the maps of outcomes and comments and notes we were taking. But there's a full catalog of both of these meetings that I think each are about twelve pages long in the site analysis report. But we did a community and economic development workshop as well, June eighth, followed by a focus group, June nineteenth. And the John Fisk Elementary School gym. And then also a kind of block party in the John Fisk Elementary parking lot where we had a. Tent set up and board set up and gave away a hundred hot dogs and just had casual conversations with neighbors and stakeholders. About, again, master planning priorities and some of the conversations that were ongoing. And one of the biggest, you know, to summarize this kind of site analysis piece is one of the biggest assets we have is we know that. The Kansas River Levy Enhancement Project and the Betterment Projects are just a great opportunity also to connect Armored Dale to the river. And piggyback on all of that major investment to improve access and infrastructure. And really, again, turn, I guess, turn and face the river as an amenity to this whole area of Windock County. Coupled with also the stormwater improvements and Eighteenth Street Bridge reconstruction, all this other. Investment that was already targeted for Armored Dale, again, validating Armored Dale as a place that's going to be with us for a long time. And it needs to see again, kind of the some of the basic, if not exceptional services it deserves down the road. So the five areas that we're focusing on for these strategies and actions are the neighborhood core of Armored Dale. The corridors that connect through to and through Armored Dale, the industrial ring. Both very adjacent to the Armored Dale neighborhood, but also, you know, it's a full industrial area or perimeter of Armored Dale. What the green machine or what we're calling, you know, Kansas River, essentially what the riverbanks could become for the city. And then as well as the West Bottoms area or Central Industrial District area that you see in blue here in the map. So you have these five areas where we're trying to define big goals, strategies, vision, and then follow that up with with action. So you see the five areas broken out by color here from the blue to the green, the yellows and the corridors are in orange and the neighborhood. But I'll go through these one by one really fast. So the neighborhood core, you know, as the residential core in the middle of Armored Dale. And this one alone has something with fourteen strategies that we've collected over this process. I mean, the breadth of the conversations about Armored Dale has been incredible and trying to keep track of all these threads and bring them all into one. Report has been quite a challenge, but there's not one of these that you could say doesn't belong in the report, like supporting new houses, infill housing. Increasing capacity of Armored Dale community organizations, improving sidewalks or adding bus shelters or finding resources for legal aid and tenant services. Fifty percent of Armored Dale is renter occupied housing that could use more strict code enforcement. Or community policing, youth programming, healthcare access, fresh food. There's a really long list where where we point out a strategy. And we try to land that strategy with concrete goals, contexts, target, action items, where which partners would be involved. And demonstrate that also through visual examples. So here the difference between a vacant lot in Armored Dale and what that infill. Might look like in quality and character. So that's just one of many again in the neighborhood core. The corridors also touch on the neighborhood core, but are more focused on how to take existing street widths. And think about how the new stormwater investment or new green infrastructures or new public spaces or better sidewalks, better parking, better lighting. Additional or any landscaping at all, like how all of these things, how just essentially investing in the right of way. Will overall improve the corridors, walkability, business districts, commerce and overall like quality of life, especially in Osage Avenue. That, you know, runs through the very heart, geographic heart of the Armored Dale neighborhood. So we're visualizing these also in three dimensions to try to make these more digestible and legible plans. And you see in plan as well, this is the extension of Kansas Avenue linking over to the new rock, proposed Rock Island Bridge project. The industrial ring is focused both on the optimizing how the industries that are around the perimeter. Can continue to operate, but also paying close attention to those low value industrial parcels adjacent to the residences. That again, are not the highest and best use stacking car tires and pallets. And what effectively has become someone's backyard is also is it's just kind of low hanging fruit of uses that. Could be elsewhere even in Armored Dale, but that adjacent to the neighborhood core makes them particularly detrimental to the the kind of health. And value of the neighborhood. The Kansas River, as I mentioned, with the levy enhancements, tremendous opportunity with the trails open, but providing clear. Access to what we're calling these river hubs. So this is a draft drawing in progress, but we're trying to show essentially all of these places. Where Armored Dale can branch out to meet the river. Everyone in Kansas City can come, meet the river is where they're also. And all these access points and trailheads that link together to create this future, you know, trail network and recreational resource for Armored Dale. And wind out county in Kansas City. So we go one by one through these and show exactly like using some of the existing available space. How you might exit the road, have a parking area, trailhead, get on the path and what other amenities over time could be implemented there. Including, you know, places to trail, get on trails, picnic camp, playgrounds or other kinds of investments in the floodplain or levee area. Along the river. So we will march through a whole series of examples of these in the report. Here's just the three. And then finally, the West Bottoms area, this was really kind of the last area we made it to so far in the planning process. And are just proposing, I guess, demonstrating for conversation, a few different alternatives for how the West Bottoms could be. The or the Central Industrial District area could be developed for conversation. You know, any one of these would deserve their own master planning exercise. But we looked at one that looks at more of an extension of the historic West Bottoms as a mixed use district. One that creates more of a destination campus based upon the river. And a final one that's more of a mixed use logistics or industrial hub. That's also trying to introduce new form of industry, best practice, sustainable industrial land use. So those are the three kind of final pieces of West Bottom. So. That's also trying to introduce new form of industry, best practice, sustainable industrial land use. So those are the three kind of final pieces of the West Bottom. So. That's it. It's a lot of stuff, and really here, especially at the end of such a long meeting, really just wanted to try to get this on your radar, introduce all of this, and as Gunner said, we'll circulate. This whole pile of stuff that we would love to hear your feedback. On, but we're very proud of the process and excited about what we've been able to do over the last nine months as it relates to the Armored Dale area. That's. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Andrew. Just just one real quick question. What were the residents? Response? Were they? Were they happy to see that somebody was taking an interest in Armored Dale? I have to believe that they there had to be some excitement there.
Yeah, yes, so far. I should say, I mean, yes, they've been really receptive and skeptical. I would say it's been a kind of healthy balance of like. There's been a there's also the Kansas City Kansas City Design Center Studio, K C D C studio that was focused on Armored Dale. I'm currently in my faculty office, University of Kansas. I'm teaching a studio also currently this semester with Shannon Chris of Dot Agency that's also looking at Armored Dale. So there's this. All of a sudden, the spotlight is on Armored Dale a little bit, and I think that that's been met with some excitement, but also like. Some kind of like, you know, a notice scene of a lot of energy going on and the kind of curiosity about. About the whole, all these different processes that are going on and overlapping. So.
Sure.
It's good.
Thank you. Good good work.
Thank you.
Gunner, anything else we need to do tonight? I mean, this was for informational purposes.
No, it's for information only. Again, I know that three hundred pages can sound daunting, but as you can see in some of these slides, it's very, you know, we picked a design firm for a reason. You know, we're our local experts. They can help us communicate these ideas, I think, in different ways. This is going to be a very illustrative, very visual plan. And it's going to be very specific, if you will, on how we can build implementation projects out of this. Because we did this in the framework of everything that's going on, be it the pandemic, be it the American Recovery Plan Act, be it all the infrastructure bills that are potentially coming down. Be it the W F I A loan that the U G currently has but hasn't developed projects for. This is the number two area, number one being the Jersey Creek Watership. This is the number two area targeted by our W F I A loan. So what we really tried to do is sort of. Pull all that together, as Andrew said, with all the strings that we heard from the community and develop some really strategic projects that we think we can come out of. Straight away. Another example, a great example being the Eighteenth Street Bridge project. That one actually got approved by Mark to not include a bike path on the Eighteenth Street Expressway. Which was a mark requirement for all bridges over rivers in their area. So in lieu of that. K dot has agreed to do some pay for some design work of an alternative path around it, and that happens to be on. Twelfth Street where we have an additional bike lane or where we have a current bike facility. So we're lining things up as things were already coming in and sort of trying to get the right people and stakeholders aligned with conversations that are ongoing. And really hit some of these implementation measures out of the gate. The number one thing we have to remember here is that for over a century, we have left Armored Dale too ambiguity. And it is, we have said this many times on many projects. Certainty is the number one thing a developer is looking for before they invest money. And there has been none of that in Armored Dale because no one has been willing to say with unequivocally whether the residential community of Armored Dale should stay or go. We had conversations in this planning process where people were still talking about getting rid of our residential neighborhood. And wiping it clean for industrial development. To this day, we're still talking as if it was urban renewal in the sixties. So I think we heard firmly both from the business commute, the local business community. And the local neighborhood that they both want to stay and figure it out together. And I think there is a uniqueness in that that does not exist anywhere in this region, and it certainly is far few and far between anywhere in this country. So we're really excited about what's coming out of this, and and I think that alone, that policy statement alone will be transformative for Armored Dale.
Thank you for those comments. Anything else anybody needs to bring up? It's been a long night. Thank you all. Appreciate it. We'll see you in a month and just appreciate every one of you.
Now go dream about Armored Dale.
There you go.
Thanks, everybody.
Good night.
Everyone.
Thanks, everybody. Take care.
Bye.